All right, welcome everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, depending on where you are joining us from. My name is Abosede George Ogan and I'm one of the co-founders of Elect Her. We are really excited to have you here today at our first virtual town hall meeting. And today we are going to be talking about the state of women's political representation in Nigeria, mapping a clear pathway ahead of 2023. So before I hand it over to my co-founder Ibi Jokke, let us just share a bit about our house rules, if that's okay. We decided to have it meeting format and not webinar format because we really wanted it to feel like a town hall. And it really does feel that we've seen all these little boxes, knowing they're representative of people. So we're going to ask you to please always ensure that you are muted. If not, we will have to mute you ourselves. We're going to have a 40-minute Q and A much later, where you can ask your questions, where you can contribute. And for that, we would ask you to use the raise hand function. Remember that we also have the chat box where you can engage, put your comments. And for those who will be live tweeting, it is hashtag elect her. So without much further ado, I will hand over to Ibi Jokke to take it over.
Great, thank you so much, Abosede. Thank you so much, everyone, for joining today. We're so delighted to have you here. This is very important conversation and you know, this is the way forward for Nigeria. Just as part of our next activities, we're going to launch a poll. And so it's time for you guys to sort of test the knowledge a little bit. So are you playing live service to understanding what politics release in Nigeria or some of the key issues we are facing? Or do you have in-depth understanding? Well, I'm going to leave that to you to be the judge of that once we release the results from the poll. So we're going to launch a poll now. Please make sure you participate and answer the poll. You don't have to feel embarrassed. Don't worry. We're here to learn and engage and interact today. So that's fine. And yeah, so going forward, I'm going to reintroduce someone. She is the co-founder and the director of programs for a foremost organization, Yaga Africa. I'm sure you've ever heard of the Not Too Young to Run Bill. Well, they are the ones that masterminded it. So it's very nice to have Cynthia here today. And Cynthia is going to bring a very special presentation on the current stake, stake and the case for women's political participation in Nigeria. Essentially, a situation analysis of where we are right now, what we need to do to go forward, and what will definitely occur if we still stay in this current picture. So I'm going to leave the floor to you, Cynthia, to make your presentation right now.
Thank you, Ibi Jokke. Thank you, Abosede. And good afternoon, everyone. It's really a great honor to be having this conversation today. The first day of November 2020, as we plan to elect her in 2023. I would be sharing my screen. Can I share the screen while the poll is on? I hope.
The poll has now stopped. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Perfect. So my job this afternoon is just to talk us through the current stake, where we are currently, basically, the stake and the case for women's political participation in Nigeria. And I'll just start from, to give a bit of context globally, what is it? How are women faring globally? And the conversation around gender inequality is not just a Nigerian problem, it's a global challenge. And we've seen that different countries have varying levels of inequalities. And in 2020, the World Economic Forum released the Global Gender Gaps Report. And it showed basically that it took the world about 99.5 years to close gender gap globally. Now, that's a lot of time. If you want to think about it, it's almost like for some of us to be probably not be alive then, when would finally close the gender gap. What we want to achieve that is a lot that we need to do. And just looking at Nigeria's ranking, it showed that Nigeria ranked 128 out of the 153 countries surveyed. And within the Sub-Saharan Africa, we ranked 27 of the 33 countries in the continent that were surveyed. We respect to how well we're doing in closing gender gaps. And what's very important figures, because we're talking about the current state, we're talking about what is at stake. So if you'd look at the difference of his, I found it interesting that when it came to economic participation and opportunity, Nigeria was ranking 38 out of 153 countries. Now, what is it telling us? That women are not lazy. A lot of women are out there doing great things. Women are working hard, contributing to revenue generation in the country. It means that women are actually contributing to our national development. But when you take it, if you go to political empowerment, that is where there's a challenge. 146 of the 153 countries, you're amongst the least performing countries. When you go to health and survival, 135 of the 153 countries. So you wouldn't blame people that say Nigeria is not one of the worst countries for women to live in. Not that Nigeria is such a horrible country, but for women are conditioned generally in Nigeria, it's quite appalling. If you go to educational attainment, Nigeria ranked 155 of the 153 countries and 153 countries surveyed. Now, what did we see in 2019 general elections? So beyond the global ranking, in 2019, there were lots of hopes and aspirations. One, we were hoping that from 2015, there would be an increase in women inclusion in government. Now, as registered voters, women constitute about 47.14%, this is INEC data. And for those who contested the election, so for the elections, we had about 23,442 candidates in the 2019 general elections. And from that number, only 3,032 were women. Now, the question was, why did we have very less, few number of women rather emerging from the process? Now, for those of us who follow the elections, before the primaries, and I'm glad we have Simi here, I know she contested. And Dr. Biukis also, I think she also contested, and they would also share their experience. So before the primaries, we actually had a large number of women who had indicated aspiration to run for office. But post-party primaries, the primaries really put a lot of women at a disadvantage and that reduced the number significantly. So we were left with just 3,032, that is about 12.9% of the candidates. Now, women contesting elections, we did, Yaga Africa did this study looking at 2015 to 2019. And we saw that when it came to presidential elections, gubernatorial elections, there was an increase in percentage of women who contested from 2015 to 2019. Now, it did not mean any woman won as the president or won gubernatorial election. There's wanting to contest in order to win the elections. Then you move to the legislative houses, at the senate. Interestingly, in 2015, 17% of the contestants were women. But in 2019, only 12.3% were women. There was also a decrease in the House of Representatives from 15% in 2015 to 11.6% in 2019. And then at the state level, we also saw that from the 14% that we had in 2015 to 12.8% in 2019. Now, what is this telling us? There was no, it's no brainer that after the elections, the number of women in National Assembly also decreased than what we used to have in 2015. Now, that's the current state from the point of election. Now, post-elections, if you see the number elected from the 2019 general elections, and you find the number of women, or the percentage of women who won the elections. And while we have only 68 women from the 1,543 elected government officials are women. So basically nationally, 4.43% of women occupy elective office. Now, that is even less than 10%, if you'd want to even say we're going for 10%. And I love this graphics, because what it tried to show was tell a story based on geopolitical zone. And what did we see in the elections, post the elections? We tried to identify which regions did we have women emerging? And if you look at the map, I hope you haven't lost me. And if you look at the map, you'd see for the senate, we had eight women elected. Sadly, we lost one of our senators, the female senators earlier this year. So the number is seven now, but I'm putting eight because that was it that actually won the elections. We pray God rest our soul. And at the House of Representatives, we had 13. Earlier, it was less than 13, but towards the end of the year, one of the lawmakers won high elections and she became through the courts. And she emerged through the courts on three by-elections. Yeah, and she emerged. So the number is at 13. But if you look at the geopolitical zone, what we have, if you look at northwest, for instance, we have no female lawmaker from the northwest in the National Assembly. If you look at the northeast, we have one in the senate and three in the House of Representatives. If you look at the north central, we have two in the House of Reps and none in the senate. Then if you go to the southwest, we have four senators, four members of the house in the house and from the southwest, and two females in the senate, two senate females senators from the southwest. And then south is to see three in the house, two in the senate, same also for south-south, one in the house, three in the senate. So it already shows that even for contesting elections, what data is telling us is within certain regions, and women need to work even more than, women generally work almost 10 times as hard as men to win elections. But for some regions, women, they would need to work triple the effort that other women have to put in, in contesting in the other region. Same also for state assembly, for the four female legislators in 22 state houses of assembly. And if you'd look also, you'd see almost, it's almost a trend here. Northwest has one, northeast two, north central five, southwest 16, south-south 11, and southeast nine. Also telling us a story, geopolitical zone, what do we need to learn for women political participation? And I know in 2019, engaging women, young women who contested the elections, part of what we saw is also when it came to messaging, for instance, for what would work as a campaign message for young women in the southeast or southwest was obviously not applicable for younger men in the northwest or northeast. And part of the conversation was how do we also as women understand our context, understand the politics within our context, and build our campaign around that? So why do we need women in political office? Now, looking at, we did an analysis of the budget in 2020. And the 2020 budget for Nigeria was 10.954 trillion. Now, we did a gender audit of the budget. Now, looking at specific sectors that we felt could have impact on women. So beyond the Ministry of Women Affairs, and we looked at education, health, we looked at science and technology, and we looked at humanitarian affairs. And so we also looked at agriculture. Now, just specific sectors that we feel would impact on women, economic empowerment, and women development in general. And what we could say that from the total budget, from this 10.954 trillion, only 0.19% of that were going to gender-specific projects that could impact on women. And if you do an analysis of the capital budget, now capital budget, that is projects in the national budget that targets new initiative, or rather that target initiatives that are not just recurrent expenditures like personnel costs, renovation of office and what have you. So capital projects, what we could tell from that, a gender audit showed that only 0.82% of that, the capital budget was gender, had some sense of gender sensitivity in the planning, excuse me. Now, what is this telling us? That even in our national planning, women are at a disadvantage. So when we see ranking, for instance, and look at level of women education attainment, so health and survival or what have you, and you're seeing that Nigeria is ranking poorly, you'd have to trace it down to the budget, because what is that national policy that directs the government when it comes to developmental plans? And even at the point of budgeting, we can't even see gender sensitivity adopted in that, in the budget process. And it means that when it comes to challenges of women, would always be put at a disadvantage. Now, I had to take this back to remind us why we shouldn't be surprised that this is how we rank globally as a nation when it comes to women issues. Now, interestingly, the report highlighted certain things I felt, I found interesting. First, women, when it came to occupation in Nigeria, the women with skilled labor in this, within the economic sector, and when it comes to work and job opportunities, we had actually 64.6% women with skilled labor, which is more than what, which is more than the percentage of men with skilled labor. However, when it came to women occupying senior positions, they had more men occupying senior positions, like within your workforce, you have more women with skilled labor, most professionals within the workforce. However, when it came to leadership positions, positions of authority within this same workforce, and women were barely, were 30.3%, so more men. That is something for us to think about. And the other was also literacy rate in Nigeria, which I found interesting. So within, for women, the population of women, 52.6% is a literacy rate for women in Nigeria. That is out of the women population. And for men, 71.3% out of men population in Nigeria. Now, what is this telling us? We have more men with high literacy and. Hello? Yeah, so if we. Thank you. If you juxtapose this with women occupying, women in, with skilled labor, you'd see it's almost like. The high percentage of women with literacy rates have been, are basically utilizing their skills to generate revenue. However, do not occupy positions of office. But then if you put it towards political empowerment, that's where we will perform worse. So currently, National Assembly is at 4.447%. That is women representation in the national, that both senate and the House of Reps. And for ministers, we have seven women appointed, actually for three ministers. So that's about 16.28%. Now, this is telling us that beyond just political participation, when it comes to education, women are at a disadvantage. However, women contribute a lot in generating revenue, in keeping this nation moving. But when it comes to decision-making, we're not there, we're missing. And so why women political leadership? I looked at different variables to consider here. Now, 2024, instance, very interesting year, with the COVID-19, a lot of things changed. But one thing that I would always, I think, stood out this year that should keep us worried was the increase in the level of gender-based violence. So if you follow the reports and the trends, you'd see that within the lockdown alone, if we just use the data for Ministry of Women Affairs, they had recorded about 3,600 reports from their different commissions of women affairs across the states. The Nigerian police had given us figures, over 700 reports of rape from January. If you look at the data from just January to June. Now, beyond the reports from the United Nations, there was an increase in the level of gender-based violence, both sexual and gender-based violence in Nigeria. And at the core of that was gender inequality. But beyond that, or the fact that we, the planning, national plan, the national, and the budgets or the economic decisions taken during the period of COVID, did not make provisions to even cater for special issues like gender-based violence. So even the response to gender-based violence was so inadequate that we had an increase in numbers, institutions that could not respond to the plights of women and girls, and more women and girls who had to live within conditions of, tolerate conditions of violence. That is one. The other is the nation that fails to adopt gender-sensitive strategy for its national planning, is initial planning to fail. And we cannot talk about national development if, when it comes to education, we're still struggling to have a population that truly caters to the needs of its citizens when it comes to quality and accessible education. And beyond education is also the economy. And Nigeria was recovering from a recession before the COVID hit us. Now, within this, within the year alone, the numbers of jobs that have been lost were obviously at an increase. But if you'd look at the formal and informal sector, we have more women within the formal sector who were largely affected by the COVID-19. But most of the economic policies that came out, if you look at the economic stimulus package, it's most of economic policies that came out to just address the needs of COVID-19 alone, focused more on targeting the formal sector. So less consideration on how to boost or support productivity within the formal sector, where there was a major heat to business at that level, where we have more women actually operating. And then you look at balanced governance, and the fact that we do not have balanced governance has impact largely on the policies that we have. So when you look at the policies that are designed and evolved, just yesterday, we're having a conversation with young lawmakers. And basically looking at how do we review some of our laws to be gender-sensitive? And just within that conversation alone. So in the room, we had just one woman lawmaker out of the many young men. Now, before we knew it, the voices supporting gender-inclusive policies, we're basically drowned by the male voices who always wanted to raise justification for why you don't need to make special provisions for women's rights or women empowerment. Now, what this has done is consistently, we've had laws, edifications, that do not even consider women in the level of planning and implementation. So what we have is policies, every day we have new laws and policies, but no one is asking the question, how does this affect women? How are women protected? And so why do we want to, why do we need women in political leadership? Now, there is nothing saying that women are the better leaders. But if you look at statistics, if you look at countries, the gender gap and report, countries performing, countries with better economy, or countries that are seen as developed economies, are actually countries that have made major progress in closing the gender gap. Now, what is this telling us? That there is a connection with, there's a connection with women political inclusion, is a connection with women inclusive or gender-sensitive policymaking. There is an interconnection with national plan that adopts gender-sensitive approach with the level of poverty and economic development. So you cannot isolate one from the other. Each of them needs to go together. And the reason why Nigeria struggles is because over a period of time, we've had policies that caters to just one section of its population, policies that do not take into consideration the broader view or broader approach. So growing poverty rates, the more we have women excluded from political leadership, the more we would experience growing poverty rates and increase in unemployment, hostile economic environment. Because when policies are assessed from the gender list, you're going to be planning beyond just planning for, planning for and for one section of society, planning also for those consideration that ordinarily are not take, and are not easily seen by the dominant eyes. What do I mean by dominant eyes? It's almost like when you, when you want to go, when you want to go on a mission. Now, if you've never, if you've never had any particular experience with respect to wherever you're moving into, you wouldn't understand how to plan for that situation. Now, what inclusion of women inclusion in political leadership does is, it assesses policies and laws through broader perspective, through both male and female, and also disability and disability lens. That way, you're planning for a larger, for a larger spectrum. Now, whenever we talk about security, there's less consideration on the role women play in peace building. And what we've seen is rising insecurity across every part of Nigeria. Every geopolitical zone has one form of insecurity or the other. And with the N S A S protest, what we have seen is the growing agitation amongst young people. It's also a call for action, that when it comes to national planning, we can no longer move with the template that we currently have. We need a template that is more inclusive and that looks at issues from a more diverse point of views. And for me, it's not just about making, it's about planning for the next general elections. And I know the conversations will be going on, on how do we get more women into political office in 2023? And the laws are not favorable. But before I go into legal reforms and all of that, and perhaps it's just to start looking at how we define our goals. And from 2019 elections, one thing that we've seen in the electoral process, that there are certain offices that perhaps if we start planning with respect to offices at different levels where we think women can easily win, especially considering the legislative spaces, legislative offices, the state assemblies, the House of Representatives, and the senate, where we know that the context, or rather the context for office is limited to a constituency, for instance, federal constituency or state constituency, or senatorial district that usually have between two, three, four local government areas that you'll be looking at for this federal and state constituency. And it's right districts, sometimes you have up to five LGAs that you'd be planning for. And perhaps if we start, if we define our goals and say we want this percentage of women at the state level, we want this percentage to win the elections at the National State Assembly, or rather House of Reps and Senate, that we will have a definite goal on where we want to occupy. And then we can target the governorship and the presidency. Well, let's do one, we meant to compete at that level because we want to always test our strength and capacity. But why I would always push for legislative houses? Because we've seen consistently that when legislations come to the floor of the house or the senate, democracy is a game of numbers. Women are always outnumbered. Yes, we have male champions, but most times the male champions are not sufficient to give us the numbers that we need. So if we have more women at that level where policies are made, more women at that level where representation of the people is done, more women at that level where oversight is performed on the executive, then we would start having a better, a better legislation compared to most women political protection. And also build informed national budgeting that is truly gender-sensitive, then design our strategy. I think there's a lot that we can learn from experiences of women that have contested before, in previous elections, of those who contested, those who contested and won. And it's always good for us to learn from those experiences. And beyond just their experiences, also learning from our male counterparts who have contested office. I think for the next general elections, the planning for the elections was totally be different from 2019. Now, what we saw in 2019 was that at the point of primaries, the political parties designed procedures or methodologies to exclude women. So it was not about giving free tickets, for instance, that did not help women in any ways. It was about having guidelines, changing venues. It was about designing primaries calendar that did not sit women. At some point, there were some women who, they were informed of a venue for primaries, but by the time they got to the venue, the venue had been changed. Some went into the night. Now, and some talks were deployed to disrupt the process when the women were leading. So what do we need to do in engaging at the political party levels? How do we get women to occupy executive positions at the party levels? Because conventions will begin, party conventions should begin soon. I know there would soon be elections within different parties. How do we get more women at critical positions of power within parties? How do we get more women as members registered within political parties? Because that way, we can start tilting the numbers, or even policies within the parties to favor women, and deploying our resources intentionally, with intentionality. For me, it's not about how much money we spend, it's about spending wisely and taking into the right quarters. We need to start thinking like, like these men do. It's not because we don't have as much sufficient, as much resources like men do to compete for office. So basically, at this point, what we need to start doing is identifying where do we need to deploy resources effectively to give us the required air power that we need to make demands at the party level and at beyond party level at the point of elections, how do we deploy our, your campaign started by now? This period gives us to start building the army, and I'm political organizing to elect her. Our goal is to elect more women into office. And I just have very support women, imagine centers of power at different levels. And at some community levels, we have some influencers who determine the votes or determine how people vote. We understand the battleground. We understand the battleground regions in our geopolitical zones or in our states or in our look, in our constituencies, battleground L G Es, swing L G Es. We need to know the numbers, understand how the numbers play out during the elections, the history of our parties within those locations. How have they won? Where did they win? At what, what was the margin of lead for them at those levels? So that we also understand the power, the power game at that level. Then building power through unconventional, conventional both the sector collaboration, but also getting the entertainment sector to support women, support women candidacy. And, um, media, I, at this point, we need to start, we need to have more women who are prominent in media spaces. Women that we can support through media, I'm true, I'm true, I'm true, the media. Because if the way the media projects people is also the way the people would see, um, those candidates that, that the media would project. I think at this point, campaigns should even begin before the next general election. Because this is for women, we need to plan earlier than anyone can even imagine. Because that is all we need and building political capital within political parties and our people. Political parties currently are still the only platform to contest for office. There is no, um, there is no alternative at this point than engaging political parties. If we get independent candidacy passed, fine. But if we don't, political parties are still where we need to get into. So we need to, um, the other day I was watching, I think it was Simi's video on Instagram. And I was just impressed because I've known to me before she went into the political party, but just following her story. Because you need to, if you're not active within your party, if you're not active in the political space, people would not know you if you can't just show up one day and begin to introduce yourself. So that political capital is, the parties need the justification on why they need to support you. And you need to have a bargaining chip to engage the parties at that level. But beyond the parties, also your people. At this point, like we always say, politics is local. Your people should know you by name and should have interaction at that level. Then becoming more innovative and open to new approaches for gender balance advocacy and, and organizing. It's not just a women, support women thing. It's about women, it's about men, because gender is a national issue. And if we have more men supporting women, it also promotes or, um, it also promotes, um, women's, um, aspiration of political aspiration and candidacy within our space. Because as it is, ready start voters, when we still have more men who already start to as voters across different geopolitical zones, not just a national figure. So we need the, the votes of men. So we need, um, um, a better or a more gender at balanced advocacy that promotes women candidacy, not, um, 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 as a collaborative effort to achieve women's, um, political, um, inclusion in Nigeria. And, um, for, for the, the goal for, for this session is how do we get women into twenty twenty-three into office? And the way it is, if we continue at this, the pace that we're going, um, it's going to take even more than ninety-nine point five years for us to close gender gaps in Nigeria. We need to do a lot more to get more women in twenty twenty-three, where the planning begins now. For young women listening and interested in contesting office, please, this is a time to start your campaign. Because the more women we have contesting, the better chances we have for women to emerge in twenty twenty-three, um, general elections. Thank you for listening and I'll stop. Thank you, um, for listening and I look forward to the conversation and questions today.
Hey, thank you so much Cynthia. Um, that was a very, um, passionate discussion. I'm really glad that we've seen different people interact with that discussion in the, in the chat set, um, section. So thank you so much for that. Truly thought provoking, but just to move on, cause you know, we're running against time. Um, right about now, we're going to play a very thought provoking video. And we decided to play this video just because, you know, so Cynthia has given this, um, discussion. We need to digest it, we need to understand better, we need to also contextualize it. But what this video will do is to show you a visual representation of what she's just talked about and to take you through a journey of self-reflection as well. So we're going to start this video right about now.
Great. So that would have been more exciting with the audio, but, um, I, I hope you got the numbers. They were scary. And I particularly liked the line that said, "A development not engendered is a development endangered," right? And this is what we're talking about. Um, and thank you again Cynthia for really a thought provoking presentation. And, you know, that presentation we just saw just reemphas- reemphasizes and reinforces why we're having this conversation, why it's important and why we should all be walking away from here with a commitment to do what we can. So we'll move along now to our panel session, um, which I promise you is going to be very exciting. And moderating that is Kadija Bello. Kadija Bello is a communications consultant. Um, and she currently is Senior Associate at State Craft. Kadija will be taking us through the panel session and also through our Q and A. So make sure that, um, as our panel session is going on, you start to put your questions in the chat box. Um, and make sure you raise your hands if you want to speak. Kadija, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, uh, Bosse. Uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's conversation. It's a pleasure to have you all here. Um, you know, as Cynthia's presentation kept moving in slide after slide, and then I saw the video, it, it just painted a true dismal picture of where we are today, you know, in Nigeria. So this is a topic I'm quite excited about. It's welcome at a very culturally relevant time. Um, we have some amazing speakers here today to do justice to the topic, the state of women's political representation in Nigeria and mapping a clear strategy ahead of twenty twenty-three. And the conversation is streaming live on Facebook and YouTube. Elect her Angie's Facebook and YouTube pages. You can follow the online conversation using the hashtag elect her. And, um, so we'll get right into it, but some basic rules before we start. And each speaker will have two and a half minutes to respond to a question. When you get to the two-minute mark and you have two, uh, thirty seconds left, I will raise this yellow crayon, perks of sharing a home office with the toddler. And when your time is up, I will raise the red ball. And if you continue to speak after five seconds, then elect her admin has, you know, go ahead to mute you. Because we need to progress, um, with the time and respect everyone who has made, made out the time to be here today. So, uh, yeah, so we'll just get right into it. Welcome Dr. Magoro, Sydney, Honorable Adissa and Ibrahim. It's so good to have you all here today. Um, I'll start with Dr. Magoro. And you're a seasoned consultant and politician. You're not new to the space. You have the unique advantage of straddling that, you know, midpoint between the older generation and the younger generation. Uh, history shows us that there have been quite some powerful women who have literally shaped Nigeria into what it is today. So, I mean, what has changed now? Why, why is it harder for women to get a seat at the table or any form of representation at all? Let's hear from Dr. Magoro. You're muted. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone in the town hall. Um, well, I'll say, yes, I do represent, um, a middle bridge between the older generation and the younger generation. And, um, of course, from the presentations we've seen, um, from Cynthia, which is, um, a lovely presentation, but very dampening and very depressing. And then the presentation from support advancement of women of gender equality, which was a, um, that we just watched now. That, um, actually brings to mind for us to actually realize what's going on with regards to the politics. Uh, a lot of women have actually worked very hard for a lot of, um, us to be where we are now. Um, lots of women struggled to get us to the position we are in now. Um, if you look at that, um, I, I wouldn't say that, um, we're regressing in, um, in the political position. But what is happening now is that we become more aware of, um, wanting to have elective positions, that's politically, um, in the, in the politics that is taking place. So, um, if we go back from the presentation, if we look at from nineteen ninety-nine, um, would see that the women did come out for politics. But at that time, um, we weren't quite sure if the politics, if elections even went to hold in ninety-nine. So those that actually came, came out for, um, elections did get their seats. Um, and it went and then there was a deliberate, um, um, there was a deliberate, uh, effort made after that to get women into, um, political positions. And you could see the rise in women going into Senate and House of Reps. But all of a sudden now, there's a total decrease. Why, um, why do we have that? More people have come into the politics, um, more, you know, and we have realized that democracy is probably here to stay. And so a lot of men to, uh, I would say, I, I wouldn't want to put it as that, but then have turned the politics, it's more like a business now. It's not something that you want to serve. A lot of men are ready to support other men to out and get their positions and after, you know, having some kind of agreement and everything. Well, in, in the case of women, we don't have that. Uh, I wouldn't go, want to go into the cultural base, which is, which plays a major role, uh, in, in the politics that would have, because different parts, um, of Nigeria have different, uh, women have their different challenges. But you can see in the northwest, it's worse hit by the women, um, in politics. So, um, we have a lot to go through when it, cause I, I should show me the yellow crayon. Um, we have a lot to, um, to do with regards to women participation in Nigeria as it is. But in the northern part of Nigeria, we could see that, uh, we have a very depressing situation in Nigeria. So I'll stop because I have my red ball, maybe when I come back again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Magoro. And, you know, speaking of the unique position that you share and what you mentioned about, you know, the times changing and the younger, um, generation that we have coming up. See me, I mean, we have long-held misconceptions which have been passed from generation to generation, you know, about the supposed issues and the ways that gender affect our ability to get certain things done. In this case specifically, how it affects, um, the candidacy of political hopefuls. So, um, see me, uh, what are the common stereotypes that, about women running for office that you wish to demystify, you know, as not relevant?
Okay. Thank you very much Kadija. Thank you so much to the, uh, Ibi Joké and the entire lecture team. Really excited to be here and my sister Cynthia, amazing, amazing presentations. I'm going to just pick some things from there. But in terms of, uh, Kadija, to answer your question about some of the things that need to be demystified, um, I don't think, I, I think, uh, I ran in F C T. I, I ran for office in, uh, for Amak Bouari, which is at Bouja North. Um, and the only two House of Rep seats in the, in the F C T. And this was in the twenty eighteen primaries under the A P C. And I didn't feel discriminated against upfront. So it wasn't, I, you, I, I didn't feel so the discrimination when I have been to a few, um, of female political forums and there's a lot that, there's almost a feeling that there's a signboard outside, you know, saying no women allowed. But it's, it's more, um, systematic. So you, um, you, you buy your form, you submit your form, you attend the political meetings, you attend, you do your war tours. There's really no sense if you, if you do your homework right. There really is no sense of you're a woman, you, you're not welcome here. I didn't get that anywhere. And I, again, I, I ran in the northern parts of the country. Um, and I also, you know, was blessed to run in a, in a situation where it, the tribe didn't seem to matter as much. Um, I think some of the, 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 I've, but I've worked as a strategist and as a political consultant um, for about ten years. And I've, I've, I've served on both presidential campaigns, gubernatorial campaigns. And I've noticed in, especially in the north, when I go to meetings in Bauchi, I notice the women naturally go and sit at the back of the political, at, at the back of the room in these political meetings. Nobody told them to. I came in, I sat in the front. I noticed after a few minutes, I was the only one sitting in front. And then eventually people started coming, women started coming up and moving closer to the front of the room. So I guess sometimes if you're not, if, if you walk into a room and you're not, um, paralyzed by a culture or whatever it is that was behind, I don't think nobody stopped me. Nobody stopped me from serving, nobody stopped me from doing anything I wanted to do within the party. So I think one of the things is just, I think the mi- the mystery of politics being so, you know, a- anti-women, I think showing up is half of the problem solved, showing up. Thank you.
Wow, very brief and to the point. Thank you so much, Simi. And, you know, one salient point you made was about that internalized attitude that women already bring, you know, baggage, if you will, that you already bring, even when you haven't faced any sort of adversity per se. And, um, I, I want to take this to Honorable Adissa now. We know politics in Nigeria, politics anywhere really is not for the faint-hearted. Um, in your candid opinion, what, what kind of woman, what portfolios must women have for a higher chance at victory at the polls?
All right. So, um, once again, I want to say thank you, thank you, elect her. Thank you all for having me and, um, it's good to be here. I'm not sure there is a position a woman cannot go for. But I want to take it from where Simi stopped. Um, I believe we have a lot of mindset, uh, that we need to address. Um, you know, it's, it's almost inherent in us. And, um, maybe it's traditional, maybe it's cultural. Um, but, you know, this mindset sort of limit us. They limit us in terms of what we believe we can do. Um, I, I, you know, I, when I joined politics and when I started campaigning, I didn't look like the average politician, you know? I didn't, I had a lot of stereotypes against me as well. You're a foreigner, you're, you're foreign trained, you, your, your bar doesn't sound like a Euro bar. You're, you're a Londoner, you know, I had those things. Um, and, and, you know, I still had to make a decision, you know, as it were, to, to show up. And I, I believe that, you know, right from councillorship to, to chairman, to assembly, to rep, the, 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 the bigger challenge for me is delivering results. So one of the things that helped me to overcome a lot of the baggage people were placing in front of me. He doesn't speak like us, he doesn't act like us, he doesn't look like us, was I started He doesn't speak like us, he doesn't act like us, he doesn't look like us, was I started showing results. So people started seeing, well, he doesn't sound like us, but he was the one that helped us fix our transformer. He doesn't sound like us, but he was the one that gave us borehole. He doesn't sound like us, but he's interested in our children. And all of a sudden, they're thinking, well, if he hasn't been elected and he's doing all of this, who cares how he speaks his Yoruba? Who, who really cares? Let him just do the work. You understand? And, and I, I believe that really we, a woman can get into any position if she, you know, puts somebody there and starts to show that, look, I, I can deliver, I can do this work and I'm here to, 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 you know, make it, make it work. Um, and, and to be honest, that is my perspective. I, I, I don't believe there is, I mean, yes, you might say, you know, politics is, is local and so you want to show up where people can easily see you presidential. It, it's a lot of convincing to do, you know, but, but we need to get in. And like Simi said, sometimes you just need to show up. You just need to be there. You need to, you, you know, put your head in there and say, look, I'm, I'm part of this race and I, I will make, I, I can make a difference and I will make a difference. So I believe really there, there isn't any bar unless we, we set it ourselves. Um, I was so excited when the, I think it was Parabah, when there was a woman that was almost going to become governor and, and then, you know, we're all hopeful and it, it never happened, you know, but we're, we're looking forward to, to that happening very soon.
Thank you, Shei, Honorable Shei. And you know, um, listening to, listening to, I, I've listened to Dr. Magoro, Simi, and then you, I mean, who would think that merit and, you know, showing up and just delivering the results, I mean, those are really good to have, right? And, but however, that's not enough. In running campaigns in Nigeria specifically, it's quite expensive to run a campaign. You know, we have that popular saying, put your money where your mouth is. That is especially true in politics. So Ibrahim, I mean, you have, uh, experience in running campaign finance. It's a game of numbers. Help us understand the vital role that finances play in strengthening a candidate's position when running for office.
Hello? I'm on, can you hear me?
I can hear you clearly.
Yeah. So thank you very much. Uh, I'm very excited to be, to be here. Uh, actually, you see, what really happened is that politicians have a way of closing some things that people cannot understand. So the more you, they say the more you see, the less you understand. That's what the politics is all about. So they try as much as well to just scare people in terms of some things. For example, the issue of the financing. They try to tell you that if you want to contest for a seat, like to be a governor, you have to have like eighteen billion, fifteen billion or ten billion. It is going to scare everybody away. And then they put up the money for you to buy the firm on the cost of, let's say, twenty-five billion to be a governor. Everything is going to scare you because you have to have a lot of money. So it only give room for people that have money. But what we understand is that, and where we see all, everywhere in the world, I use the issue of crowdfunding system. And the crowdfunding system is not number that you have. For example, if you have a one million followers, for example, in Electra, women that want to participate and join and help each other, just one million of you, if you give one one thousand naira, you have a billion naira. One billion naira is a very big post in terms of doing an election. Because the posters and things are not going to continue to be coming on the bus. People are going to rely on social media and other things to, to run the campaign. So what I think is more important to the women is that understand the smaller groups, the women in the market, the movement in the informal sector. How will Electra move on to that level? We call them the offline influencers. Talk to them. If you talk to them, keep up an application that will now track them using their phone numbers and also the PBC that we're going to give you the location where they are going to vote. If you get those kind of people committed to your system, you can now put up your own system to Electra to see how they will be moving and getting all this what government put in for them to get. For example, the trade money, blah, blah, and things like that. We have seen some pieces of the women that are trying to help them to achieve those kind of things in the Sibian, uh, government, NASSAL and other, other agencies that do. Do that social analysis for them so they can understand. When they see you have a value to their lives, they will be committed to that movement for you to get this number of women to participate in the election. If you started early, definitely are going to get that number that you have. So if you have that number of them, then you don't make a crowdfunding aspect of it. But you have to link, uh, the dividend of this democracy directly to them. How do you do that? That's the major problem we're having. Because I know one of the major problem we're having is that women are the problem of women. I'm so sorry to say that because women always see women not capable of taking them where they're supposed to go. It's also the Larry behind a man to take them where they're supposed to go. We have to change that mind, mindset. The only engaging the way Honorable Saye said, we have to engage. If you, uh, put in a platform like, uh, Electra here, then Electra should pursue some other things that can be deliverable. Let's see people start seeing results. How are you going, what are you doing for them? If they connect to what you are doing, it's easier for them to help you crowdfund. When, when they do the crowdfunding for you, it's going to be easier for you to get your money.
Um, I would quickly come back to Simi and then you, uh, Dr. Magoro. Um, Simi, do you agree with, uh, Ibrahim that, you know, this money issue is just to scare people away? You just concluded a campaign. I'm hoping you can help us break it down exactly what, what do we mean? How, what does the campaign funding actually go into, right? Is it, uh, is, is this something that isn't as big as we think, you know, which is like what Ibrahim's saying, that it's just to scare people away? Or, you know, does a lot actually go into running campaign finances?
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to quickly piggyback off what, uh, him says, I agree with, in, uh, and thanks for highlighting the less, basically he captured it in the phrase, you know, the less you see, the more you see, the less you know, like in politics. So policies is expensive. Let's not, let's, uh, Mickey Mouse, you know, Disneyland this. Politics is an extremely expensive business. Um, and I think most of the charges, it's like those, you know, the American credit card. I suppose a lot of the charges, you know, so not really, um, the form might be expensive initially and you think, okay, maybe that's it. But and outside of the money that you actually have to spend on the, on the tour campaign and the team that you put together, because it takes money, even if you have volunteers, you still have, you're responsible largely for their, um, for their transport, for their feeding. When you have volunteers, I mean, if you're not paying them, um, you, you're paying them, so you have all these charges that no one really talks about in politics. Uh, and, and, and also you have all these party meetings that no one tells you about. So on one end of campaign, in the, on, on your, on the, you're campaigning, you can have three political party meetings where your leaders call you and say, okay, all aspirants show up at so, so, so hotel. You how, how could you, and then there's a new, no one told you about before you started, uh, um, cost for the delegates, something, something transport. How do you find your, everyone is asked to do next two hundred and fifty thou- one hundred and fifty thou- so, much as you plan, I believe in, which is good. But again, like Ibrahim said, the more, the more you see, the less you know, because there are all these side charges that you can really never really factor of. And you're, you're, you're literally running a three-pronged approach. You're facing the people, you're facing the stakeholders within your party, you're also facing your own internal team and making sure that you don't have people that infiltrating them with money. So you also a different, to different stakeholders and ensuring that you have loyalty. And I don't believe money buys loyalty, but I do believe that politics is expensive. But let it out a map, this, politics is also about numbers. And in twenty fifteen, people forgot how, and how amazing it was to see older people in that raising their pensions to donate to campaigns, you know, so what I was thousand naira was five hundred naira. So my time is up, but yes, still, but politics is expensive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now, um, Dr. Magoro, so, I mean, from the conversation, we've learned that the internalized mindset of women, the exclusion that you could feel from, um, not uh, fitting into a particular stereotype that the old order is used to, um, as well as money are significant challenges in running a campaign. But, um, you've contested during multiple election cycles for women looking to run in twenty twenty-three. What are some other critical barriers that they will definitely face that they need to be aware of and how do they navigate those challenges?
Okay, um, I think, uh, we need to get something very clear from here at the beginning. Um, yeah, everybody's making politics or, you know, the conversation here is making it look as if politics is easy. Politics is far from easy, especially for the women. It is not, um, something that you can get into and think, you know, you show up and then you win the election. And of course, the different parts where you, um, contest election plays a major role. Um, if you're contesting, if you look at it now in the Northwest, we don't have a single woman. I'm from the Northwest. I've contested from the Northwest. And maybe I've mentioned what, you know, my experience has been in some cases in the places. Now, where I, I will talk about the region where I, I contested. Contesting in the, in, in the Northwest, apart from being capital intensive, you have to make sure you prove your onions in whatever you do. And that has to go with cultural beliefs too. Um, being able to come out and to contest, you must have a backing. And that's why part of what I would advocate for is having a lot of men for us to make men aware that we need to get a lot of men to campaign for the women. And, you know, like the he for she's, as we've been saying so far, we have to convince, we have, we have to get men to convince other men. Most times what we do is that we have women going out for, to advocate for women to get political positions. So we need to be able to get our men to come out and campaign and actually convince others with regards to having, why we should have women contest for these positions. If we, um, well, for some of us, if you have children, I mean, if you have a daughter, that's for the men, you would want your daughter to achieve the best she has in school. You want her to get the best grades, you want her to do everything to the best thing. And you believe she can achieve those things. So why don't you think that women can hold up these political positions and actually do a very good job in it? So we need the men's support. Money, as we mentioned, is very important. Um, I know Simi mentioned it. There are so many things built into, um, politics that is not written out there. It is far from it. When I contested my own election, I mean, I've been contesting, become a veteran in contesting elections, um, as of the twenty nineteen election, I was the only female from the Northwest. Okay, that turned, that was at the general elections under the PDP and the APC. And I'll tell you, it wasn't an easy thing. I think I, I probably went into depression after a year, for a year after that. Because it took a lot of bashing, it took a lot of expenditure. Um, the night before the elections, I, I was called and I was made to pay for everything, everything, uh, for the primaries. That, that's what I mean with the primaries, okay? And so you spend so much money within the party itself for your primaries. By the time you go into the general elections, it is another ball of game. You end up spending over ten times. If you've been to the general elections, you would know that general elections is nothing like the primaries. And if you've been into the primaries, you know primaries is very expensive. So imagine being in a general elections and you're a woman, we don't have the support. The men give themselves a support. They rally agai- around their men to make sure they achieve that position. But a lot of women don't have that funding that would come to them. So we need to, we need to, you know, um, I'm not, I, I'm not saying, we're not discouraging anybody from contesting the elections. But if we're going to do it, we have to come out as women to support, even if it means like a hundred women towards the funding and make sure we pull it through to every position. Then we have to get people like Ibrahim and Honorable Shei to campaign for women in our areas. We have to get our husbands and our fathers to support us. You can't come out to contest election and your brother, your father, your uncle are talking against you and campaigning for your opponents and you expect to win the election. It doesn't happen that way. So we need to be able to look at our, at the different parts of the country, where we come from and actually focus in areas. Of, of course, we have to start from bottom up. We've been talking about House of Rep, uh, Assembly and the rest of them. We have to encourage.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dr. Magoro. Thank you so much. So now the ball is in your court, Honorable Shei. I mean, Dr. Magoro has talked about women facing challenges that were not amplifying in this conversation. You know, um, unwritten rules that sort of just pop up here and there and keep jumping and biting you when you don't know where they are coming from. You need the support of men, men to campaign for you. You need your father, your uncles. Literally, you need the entire village to campaign on your behalf. You are one of the youngest lawmakers in Nigeria. You've been on the political scene for a while. You were the principal private secretary to the late Governor Ajemobi of all your states. Can you briefly take us through the process of running for a state House of Assembly seat in Nigeria? So from the moment you declare your interest to winning party primaries and then, you know, eventually running under the party ticket as the main candidate. And I realize that this is a tall order with the time that you have. But I'm hoping that you can help us understand the process, you know, in a way that then helps us make comparison with these, um, with these points that Dr. Magoro has, uh, made, has just made.
Wow, it's done half minutes. Okay, let me, let me, let me try. So in two thousand and eighteen, I decided to run for office, um, for several reasons. My main reason is development. I believe development should be, you know, the ideology, unwritten ideology. We say we don't have ideologies, but yes, I believe development should be the key ideology. So I asked my boss, I, I, I got his consent, if you like, um, I was working with him at the time I was going to resign. And, and, um, primaries was in October. Um, we bought the forms, we went for primaries. Now, um, there are different parties have different types of primaries. You have consensus candidates, you have direct, you have indirect. We went through that process. Um, I came out where four of us, um, eventually came out, there was a lot of spending. There's a lot of spending during primaries. You're trying to, so if it's direct, you're trying to literally get to everybody. If it's indirect, you're trying to get to the ward executives that will, that will, um, make the vote, that will do the voting. Um, we, so we had spent a lot of money at that time. Eventually, we got the tickets, we started campaigning. Um, I wasn't relying on just my party. I was doing a lot of community work because I realized I couldn't even trust my, my party hundred percent. Because as I said, I had a lot of challenges as it were. So I had to be doing a lot of community work with the associations, with churches, mosques and so on and so forth. Um, and we did that all the way into, um, um, elections. Um, elections is a, it's, it's war, you know? So you're talking about security, you're talking about, um, um, you know, mobilization, you're talking about canvassing, you're talking about, it's, it's the whole works. Um, one of the things that has helped me and not just myself, I have a colleague at the House of Rep, he's from Uluo Lake. You see, every time we talk about money, there's a lot, you cannot finance election by yourself. Let's not kid ourselves. Yeah, there is a lot of fundraising you need to do. I had a fundraising committee. They were calling my friends from King's College, calling my friends, calling people I've worked with. They were drawing on, I gave them names, called these people, they are my people, my uncles, my aunties, my friends, my business associates. They were raising funds, you know, and that was the only way that we were able. Nobody can take that thing alone. I'm telling you the truth, it's, it's heavy, it's expensive and we make no mistakes. My friend that is in, uh, Uluo Lake House of Assembly, she had been in the business world and a lot of her friends. She said she didn't borrow one naira. She didn't, and she's not in debt. And she won the election convincingly. So you have to raise financial capa- capital or capacity. And we went for the election, um, and we won. So I've tried to simplify, but there are a lot of things. So you have diabolical things that are coming, you have security issues, you have a lot of things you deal with all along the way. Um, but you, 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 you have to work with your party, you have to work with the leadership. You have to make sure that they, they are willing to go out with campaigns for you. But you also have to work with the community, you know, because ultimately it's like the leadership, then the party, then the association, then the community. So it's, it's all encompassing. I'm, I'm trying to keep it short, but it's a whole lot of work. You're going day, you're going night, you're meeting, every meeting, every meeting you have, you cannot leave a meeting and say, thank you and goodbye. Every meeting, they expect an envelope. You would not leave that meeting without dropping an envelope, believe it or not. So everything else you said means is nothing if the envelope doesn't come with it, you know? So i- it is as expensive as that, but you have to do it. And this, and this is the politics we are running for now, unfortunately. But you need to really have a team dedicated to raising money for you, to helping you, so that you can, you can really, um, you know, get through to the people um, that, that, uh, will vote for you.
Thank you so much. And, um, I see a number of people talking about violence and security in the chat. We'll come to that after, you know, um, talking to Ibrahim on this fundraising issue. You know, which, uh, Honorable Adisa just mentioned. Ibrahim, you played a very vital role in the twenty fifteen general elections. You served as the coordinating consultant for the Bouhari Support Organization. And, you know, more importantly, you pioneered new technology in the area of campaign financing. You, you created the BSO. In your, you created the BSO scratch cards, which were a funding strategy for President Buhari's campaign. What was the impact of that initiative on his campaign? And, you know, how can women adapt this in terms of leveraging technology to fund elections come twenty twenty three? You need to unmute yourself, you're muted, Ibrahim.
Okay, quickly, um after twenty twenty eleven elections, uh under the CPC, I went around with almost twenty nine different states. And I realized that um most of the state we have, we have the crowd, we have people, but nothing is organizing them. Nothing put to, put even to take their phone numbers, it means going to be on a note, on, 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 on a notebook, you know, and there is nothing to organize them. So we have this number of, big number of people following us everywhere we go in the north. And and then at the end during the election, after the election, we realized that the votes, we didn't turn those, those numbers to the votes. So actually, immediately after the election, I met one of the governors, he's currently a governor now, I told him that. If Buhari is going to contest ten, twenty times ahead, he's never going to win because he's not having block votes. He's not having, for example, if you look at the E, uh the Tenable teams and things like that, you have the market women, you have the blah blah that would help them to see. They have a group of vote that can give you. Nobody can go into Maja with a CPC or with Buhari people because you know that that is not anything that can, that can give that collective vote that people wants to get. So what I really need to understand, so I designed a platform for them. I I decided to see, okay, let's do something different. Let's see how we are going to manage those people so that we can see where they are. So the scratch card that we designed was just in order to give us your PU number. So we tell you that if you get this scratch card, definitely it's like commitment because they are going to pay like a hundred naira to them, I'm gonna buy it. But in sending us that, 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 that hundred naira is a scratch card that you have, you send us with your PU number. Your PU number will help us use a G I S and now print you for particular location. So in every state, we know how many people are trying, are willing to vote for Mr. President, we have like six million of them on the platform. So also, we arrange all this, we have some people who come to you and tell you that I have this number of people. I, I, and the user, so, 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 you, he tell you his group. But at the end, what we, what, what, what I organize is that, okay, if you come, we tell you, okay, register yourself. This is the card we want to give you, use this card and register your coordinates. We want to see what is the special distribution of those people that you said you are as your agent or some people that you know as your group. If you belong to National Association or whatever you are, let us see your coordinates. That coordinates will help us to see you have this special distribution and how much votes you are going to complete. Scientific, for example. But what we are trying to do is that if we want to go now, women want to really participate, I think what we're supposed to first see is that. See yourself as a movement, don't only see yourself in the party. You are going to go to the party with the strength that you have from a movement. What type, how many groups did you, can you put into, for example, uh Alexa, for example? So this number of groups that you are going to have, get their coordinates, see the special distribution of those uh people that you have. Then use the social media, use the offline uh uh influences, because there are always the online and the offline. We mistake the offline uh 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 influences with the online offloads. You don't see somebody with twenty, twenty million followers in, in, on Twitter, on Tesla, that actually that he's strong enough to get elected. No, be, be, as they said, the election politics is local. We have to come down to those people and talk to them, let them understand. Those people, if you have a very nice application that you would start those guys into an application, ask the movement outside. If you go to any party that you want to contest in APC, PD or anything, they will say, ah, this is Dr. Magor coming from, she has a movement. She know that they have people, they have people that can fund her. That was saying, saying, Honorable is saying that you have to have that connection, that link, that number of people. That will assist you and help you in trying to mobilize to be that ambition that you want, yeah, you want to create. So actually, we really made that space, you understand, for us to create that platform like a movement. You can read smaller, smaller group, bringing them on board to a single direction that this is what we are going to do on twenty twenty three to support women. So if we don't have that kind of idea, that kind of mindset for you, to put yourself, to see yourself bringing women in different smaller groups. For you to make a bigger group for you to move. I have, we, we registered almost five hundred groups for Mahmoud Buhari in two thousand and fifteen. Uh when the PDP is doing their own, I had to register uh one thousand group. But the funders will do work for them because they didn't get the idea of exactly what we're trying to do in order to put that kind of system. So we can send information and receive information because it's a two-way thing. Then you have to get the feedback from the field on what you are doing. If you don't have the feedback, you are going to waste your money campaigning and not getting the right people to do their uh campaign for you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Ibrahim. And then, so I'm coming back to you now, Simi. Um your running story in twenty nineteen was quite an interesting one. You ran as a young female non-indigene in, in the Amak um constituency, as you pointed out earlier. In simple terms, it, it would, um for lack of a better word, it would seem like uh uh mission impossible. You know, when you consider all of the factors that were at play. Yet you went from being the underdog to one of the strongest candidates, you know, in that community. How did you get that done? And I would like you to tailor, I would like you to uh tailor your answer towards this, um you know, security. We're talking about security now, and then security uh is different. There's different prongs when we're talking about society in Nigeria. You have the diabolical means, you have the area guys, the thugs, you have different angles to the security conversation. And when you're running as someone who is sort of not uh in, in the, in the club, so to speak. You're running as an outsider in quote, in that kind of situation. How did you go from being someone who was probably seen as not a threat to one of the strongest candidates in that election?
Um thank you very much, Khadija. Uh um going from the probably zero, because I, again, just like Honorable Sheyi. I don't look like a politician, I don't sound like it, I didn't even speak the language. I mean, I was all shades of wrong in terms of the traditional politics. And um but I, I would like to say, I didn't run alone, you know? And as we are doing this forum and one of the objectives with Electra, what is to, you know, create a, a, a community. Um there are forums like uh Wimpole that are creating community of women. There was IAGA that created a community. I will tell you, before I bought my form, there was a community from also the work I had done in the education space with public schools. And, you know, I know I called up my, my ecosystem, even like, well, one of the leading lights in the Wimbiz. I remember she was one of the first people I spoke to, I want to run, and I, I think this is crazy, and she said, it's not crazy, go ahead with you. You know, I spoke to um the first female deputy governor in the country, and she helped me with my budget. And was like, look, what is, what is your budget? I was like, ah, budget, um this is what I'm thinking, that those numbers are unrealistic. Come to me at APM, we'll work through what's your constituency, what your voters register looks like, I will tell you what a realistic budget should be like. I had Mrs. Oyebody who kept cheering me on. I didn't run alone, I had Bella, Fali, even Cynthia that's here. You know, I have people who are like, you know, go, you know, so I didn't, I was a face, but I was a face of a body. So I didn't feel alone, I didn't run alone. And community cannot be, anyone who is doing G I Jane, you, you know, you will fail at, you know, at, at, at that, beyond printing posters. You know, but if, if you're really serious about running, your community eh eh endorses you first. And I didn't buy a form, I didn't do a poster, I didn't do a photo shoot until my community said go forward. So that, that gave confidence to break whatever so-called barriers. If I didn't, when I was breaking barriers, it was just normal, you know? So please, we, we, as women, community e- ecosystem is extremely important. The prayers of mother, when you talk about diabolical, I didn't know anything about it until the first female deputy governor goes. Ah, before you sit on any chair, wipe it, take this scarf, take your little, little things, well, you know, it's simple things. My colleague that ran, Aisha Algi in Kebbi, I ran in Kebbi State. Well, I would DM her, what's up, how, how are you doing, how do you pee? Because everybody, every man just comes out of the car and just pees. How do you get through peeing, like, you have to start drinking water at four AM. Finish and get what you need to do and pee before you leave the house at five thirty AM and go for your next one tour. Simple practical things, but I have to tell you, if I, if I sit here and say I did it, I will be lying. I had an ecosystem, and I think with discussions like this, we're creating more ecosystems that will give women confidence and the boldness to just go for. You know, and there are inherently challenges, and I'll say this, please, on the last note, I know we're going into solutions. But Khadija and for everyone who is listening, the biggest challenge inherently is the political party system. When your chairman, deputy chairman, secretary, assistant secretary, treasurer, financial secretary, legal assistant. If everybody in the party is male except for woman leader and assistant woman leader, we will always have an uphill challenge. So that means within the party system, I didn't have a, an ecosystem, my ecosystem was outside of the political party. And the truth is, if we're going to change this five percent into a bigger slice of the pie. We have got to make sure that women are not just in elected positions, but they are in this formal positions within the party. Because people will always hire in their image. So we will always get a male-dominated political system because people, well, it's, it's just, just like white America, just like corporate America. You will always hire in your image. So for us to get balance, we've got to penetrate the political system, thank you.
Yeah, and then speaking about penetrating the political systems, you know, uh Dr. Magor. Political parties are obviously one of the critical stakeholders which determine the candidate's success, right? But um let's flashback to the N Sars campaign, for the N Sars protests. That dominated conversations in Nigeria and outside for the past two weeks, right? Uh one of the interesting aftermaths of that event was conversations with online and offline about, you know, creating new pa- uh parties. That are youth-centric uh focused and all of that. But, I mean, when you consider the sheer amount of work that goes into establishing standard political structures. How feasible is this? What are your thoughts about such suggestions, you know, creating new party structures ahead of twenty twenty three?
Well, um first I'll say that, you know, the party structures we have here. Um those that are already in the party and um are probably older now. All of them started as young people and they were youths that started off the parties. And they've uh probably gotten older in those parties and still remain there. So creating another new party with um youths, of course, is something that can be done because there's a large population, there's a large number. And as Ibrahim said, you know, you could put money together and still create, you know, that party where you have a lot of youths. Our major focus here is um women's participation in politics. So if that is going to happen, it has to be a case where a lot of women would be included in the party system. Um if you're creating a new party, they must, you must create laws where if you have the chairman, the deputy chairman must be a woman. If it's a man, or if you have a woman that is a treasurer, then the deputy has to be a man. Maybe that way you would have a balance of women within the political parties. Apart from that, it's very difficult, because then if you have the youths come up for the, for the different positions, we end up having the same thing. You know, we just have men all over the place. I mean, these parties we have here, all of them, even with the PDP, when they all started twenty years ago, they were not, they were not seventy, they were not sixty. They were all in their thirties and their forties, and they're still there and older now. So there is those same youths that became what they are now and have still not given the women the space to participate in the, in the, you know, in the politics. So you must, there must be some, um if you're, if you're creating a party for the, for the youth, it must be in such a way that women are included. In the party hierarchy and positions. Apart from that, um until we can get single can, single candidatship where a woman can come out on her own. Um but we look forward to having more women coming out for presidential, vice presidents, governorship in this next coming elections. Why? Because I believe we've, we've nurtured um very strong younger women. That, you know, actually led the N Sars that took place. So I, I believe we have very determined, a young, you know, ladies that'll come out in the next election. And they'll be able to fight it through in whatever comes up. And with a network like Electra, um doing a wonderful work, the job they're doing now, there'll be a lot of network going on with new ideas.
Thank you, Dr. Magor. And um you know, flowing from what you just said about the role of women, for instance, in that uh in the N Sars movement. Something that really uh stuck out was the way all the different components and moving parts just seemed to be working in sync. So there was this collaboration, you could see how this party was, you know, feeding into the activities of the other. So my next uh two questions are going to touch on collaboration, you know. One is going to be addressed to Honorable Sheyi and then the other to Ibrahim. So, um Honorable Adisa, I mean, youths, uh Dr. Magor also talks about what it would take for. To have youth-centric parties, either independent parties or have youths be more um, be more active in the existing structures, right? We've been called lazy, we've been called selfish, we've been called coconut-headed too, you know. So there's already tension between the younger generation and these legacy politicians. That have dominated the existing structures. So, um Honorable Sheyi, what practical ways can we bring about um collaboration between the young? And the more experienced hands to increase their chances of clinching party tickets?
Um Khadija, so you're asking, how can we get more young and, and older generations to work together?
Yeah, to work together, yes, for, for an increased chance of the younger generation to clinch those party ticket.
Well, okay, as a, as a philosophy for me, you know, I'm, I'm a big person, um you know, I'm big on collaboration. I think the N Sars movement was, 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 you know, an amazing movement. Because we saw collaboration at its best, you know, we saw in different sectors, we saw, we saw it work. Um and that's one of the problems of the older generations, if I, if I can say that way. Because we're not using technologies, I mean, let's talk about government, we have government um agencies that don't have websites. We have government agencies that, you know, they're still using Yahoo as their official email. We have a lot of, you know, lapses in that regard. In terms of participation, I, I believe there is a lot that can, you know, a lot of collaboration that can come in. But it has to really start from the party system. You see, every time we talk about, um you know, the party and government, the, the seats you see are the fruits of the tree. The roots, where the tree comes from, is the party system. So when you talk about elected officials and all of these people, they are the fruits of a tree, but the tree itself is in the roots. That's where the work needs to get in. A lot of things we should do, you know, have you ever thought about virtual word meetings? It might sound elitist, but you might start to, you might start to, you know, have virtual meetings or word meetings or certain types of meeting. In, in, in the grassroots movement that will, that would also include some people that may not normally be able to attend. So I say, I, I mean, if the party is open and willing, and unfortunately, a lot of parties, older parties as is constituted. And not, you know, they are, they are old, male, um dominated. And so for you to see that sort of synergy, that sort of collaboration, you need to sort of have a change of the people in the current party system. If you're going to see that synergy, the guys there right now don't believe there is anything wrong. They believe it's okay, they believe we should continue as we've been doing it, the, the system is not broken. The young guys trying to get in and saying this system is faulty, is, is, is keeping us out. So there needs to be, you know, a change of mindset, a change in the party system, a change in the executive. So that the, the sort of people we're looking for will be able to work with the young people. People are talking about new parties, the systems, the structures, it, it is difficult. We're not talking about a regional party, we're not talking about a state party, you're just talking about a national party able to handle things like presidency. As it, it is not a joke, you know, but you're going to have to be deliberate and build the system and the constitutions that will allow, you know. You, a lot of these things we're talking about. I, I see a lot of work being done at the party system if we're going to see more collaboration and more, um you know. Engagement between the current system and, and old, and sometimes you might just need to change the people there currently.
Yes, and you know, still on collaboration, eh eh back to this issue of money, right? Another, um and another, and I'm, and I'm directing this to Ibrahim now. Um um one other component of the N Sars movement that we saw was how the channel, the flow of finances, right? And it was a campaign, whatever we call it. We, so we saw the flow of finances and how it translated to results on the ground. There was collaboration from the people who were donating, to the people who were receiving, to the people who were dispersing, giving accounts. In what ways can organizations and, you know, various parties, even like Electra, for instance. What innovative ways can we fundraise for female um candidates ahead of upcoming elections this year? As well as local government's elections next year, so even before twenty twenty three. What are the immediate things that we can do to raise funds urgently for female candidates in these elections? As for you, Ibrahim.
Is it me? Okay, um what I'm seeing is that it's simple. In trying to organize finances, if you look at what happened in the N Sars movement, they get the funds, they know where to channel the funds. they get the funds, they know where to channel the funds, but the problem that is no leadership. They said they are going to do a leaderless system, even though they said that leadership is at the back end, you know, listen. But in trying to move in a political movement, people want to see exactly who are the people in charge? Who are the people, who am I giving the money? Even if the money is working, at the end, somebody can just cause the confusion for you, the way we have seen what has happened to the N S A R S movement. But what I'm seeing is that even if young men decide, okay, we have the numbers, we have know-how to use the technology, we can craft fund and make money. You have to have a clear vision, a clear dimension. We are here and this is where we are going to. I have a, I put up a link, a small something that we're trying to show them how to do it, we call it We Together Nigeria. If you go to the site and you check and see what we are trying to do, what we're trying to do, we give them a small formula for small action. You can see the crowdfunding platform on the Lefta side of the, the website. What we intend to do is that try and look at your strength first. What you see, you have all the musicians, you have all the guys that are online that have this crowd and this number. If you look at the people on the streets, if you look at Lake, you can now see even during that night visit, you can send like a hundred thousand or hundred thousand people on that, because if you go to National Stadium Abuja, it's just sixty-eight thousand people capacity. If you put two, one million people there, you can see the number they are going to get. But what we are trying to see is that if you see people moving on the street, you see them on the number of just the two thousand, five thousand, you see them as a crowd. But the actual, this is politics, and politics is all about number. That five thousand people, that two thousand people cannot work unless you have smaller, smaller two thousand people come together for you to assist, to work. And we can see the divide that we have seen in the N S A R S, that we have the southern part of it seeing inside, and then the northern part of Nigeria seeing another deposit. So you have to have the, that leadership, because if there is that leadership, somebody will now eye on the discussion towards it. Okay, listen, we have used all this division, we have been Muslims, Christian, we have been this rep, this rep. And up to today, we don't have a single twenty, one hundred kilometer stretch of road. We don't have good hospitals, we don't have anything. So that's mean our, our, our ethical differences, our, our, our biases on religions and that has not helped us in anything. So we want leadership that will come out and now start talking, doing this mindset issue, changing people's way of seeing things. That this is, this is, this N S A R S is for the whole of the nation, everybody is going to benefit from it, because this is what is missing, missing in the movement. So even you can craft fund, you can make money if your idea and identity of the leadership is not there. Why is it easy for us to donate for Mr. President, for President Bahari, is that people know this is President Bahari, I'm donating to his cost. In the church, if you are from a reading Christian or anything, you know your pastor, you know why you are paying your tithes. That pastor that is preaching is the reason why you are paid. So in N S A R S movement, we have to have a clear leadership and a point that this is where I'm taking young men to. And this is a kind of system, and this is, and our platform, We Together Nigeria, we tried to even create a platform, what we said is that if you know you have it on you, and you look at electricity and you think of how we can change electricity, try and write up something, put it on your own platform, on Facebook, explain to us how electricity can be available. Then you hashtag us with We Together. If you do that one, people will now see leadership in you, you'll now see what you have and what you can bring. And also, we have young men, we have Honorable Sheyi, he's already in the International Assembly in, in, in here. So why don't we use this kind of people that we already have, so that we can build that numbers with them? So that with them, we can now ask for funds to come, then we know for exactly how we are going to usher in that, use that money to get to where we want to get to. But because if there is not that clarity, that transparency, definitely, if it is going to be young men, there is going to be serious problem if money is involved in the movement like that.
Thank you so much, transparency, a clear, a clear vision, right, and leadership that can be held accountable. I will start with you, we're going, we're wrapping up this question, which we're going to, you know, throw across all of the speakers. And I'm going to start with you again, Ibrahim. So, you know, what, besides all that you have said, so if you could condense it into just one minute, right? What practical advice, what concrete advice do you have for a woman who is watching this and intends to run in twenty twenty three? What does she need to be doing immediately? What does she need to know? What does she need to be doing immediately? What can she do from now till twenty twenty three to ensure that she wins at the polls?
Okay, the first and fastest, women must understand that and must realize that even to stay in your husband's wife, well, husband house or to be a daughter or to be anything, has anything to do with the politics of this country. So a lot of people, when you talk to them, they said, I'm not politician, some even said, I hate politics. But politics defined you, defined even the bridge, the air, you, 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 you can help, it's all about life. It's your life. So what I want women to do, there isn't a few now to keep on discussing, I know, nobody can stop women from discussing about bags, about shoes and about anything. But I used to talk about shoes and bags, and I think that the cost of doing that business or doing what you are doing still tied on to who are the, who are the leaders of this country, how this country is going to, because the vats is going to affect you, how they run the system is going to affect you, how they transport those goods that you are going to sell is going to affect you. So definitely, as a woman, you're not supposed to be, and also the greatest gift, or what God has given the women for free is that all of us women, we have wives, we have daughters, people that we have that, that feelings for them, you understand, that they can talk to us. If my daughter will come to me and now talk to me about election, about how she feels about, I will feel more interested in what I'm doing. Wife will do the same thing, I will feel more, more impressed, because she'll point out to say, this is Dr. Magro, and this is what she can do. And I can still help, I say, okay, definitely, I'm not supposed to, let me exactly follow and pass through and see if I can help in, in trying to bring that. So what I see is that that disconnect, women supposed to see men as their partners in trying to develop to where they wants to go to. They should not see us as competitors. That's why in this, when, when, when I'm sending this message to all of my friends, I sent a lot of men. So that the men will come and see the effort women are trying to do, so that we can complement that effort. And we can see all the women that are elected persons, they do a very wonderful job for us. Actually, we can push everything, you can see the smart, went to all the best school we can think of, then why don't we just push them up, so that we can compete? I think this is the ninety-five years, ninety-nine point five years that I think we can do, if we can put up, elect how we put up a movement, a small application which I gladly have to, to, to give to, for women to coordinate the smaller, smaller growth. I think it's going to be very beautiful something, at least by the end of twenty twenty three, and put it into
Thank you, thank you so much.
And long term. The short term will be twenty twenty-three, the medium term will be twenty twenty-seven, and the long term will be twenty twenty-one. If you project a program that you are going to last for this ten years and put your effort and energy, and then use your mouth, go to FM station, go to online, offline, talk to people, people will
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you so much, thank you so much, Ibrahim. We're so pressed for time and we can go on and on, and we still need to go into the interactive session with the audience. But, you know, the two major things I picked from what you said, sorry, three actually, is for whoever is actually serious about twenty twenty three to have more than a passing interest. What am I saying? To have like a very well-vested interest, you know, in the scheme of things and how the politics that's played at the top level affects the, the most minute detail of her life and the life of those around her. She has to start seeing men as allies. In fact, by now, she should be developing a very strong network of male allies. And she has to think long-term in her strategy, ask for help where it's needed. Now, I'll go to you, Simi. You've run before, you've been in those shoes. So now, speaking to, you know, the woman who wants to run as your sister, as your friend, as, you know, someone who you care about, what can she learn from your experience and what are the things that she needs to be doing in order to be victorious in twenty twenty three?
Okay, one minute, I guess, I, I would start word, word level. I know a lot of our discussions as Nigerians, as a country, is very top-down. So, you know, there's a lot of who, who you know, do you know the E O national leader, is that, is that person rooting for you? And, and all of that, but I honestly believe that we have to do two simultaneously, especially as women. We have to have the top-down and the bottom-up approach. So right now, there are ward councillors in whatever constituency you want to represent, do you know them? You know, I didn't know them. So what I did after I ran is I documented everything and put it on a website, you know, know F C T dot com, K N O W F C T dot com. And I was like, I didn't even know who my councillors were. So I put all the, all the sixty-two ward councillors F C T exist on the website, you know, right now, so that people can know. And it's from there begun to know that, okay, there is really, you know, we can't even shout about representation at the National Assembly. If the ward council level, there's no representation. I was blessed and happy that even when I didn't win my primaries, I put the monies and the support that I received as an aspirant, I supported for other women that will run for ward councillor, councilship seats. And, and enabled to do that to one of their primaries, and the two that won their primaries, one of them got elected. She's the only one, Honorable May from Ushafa War, the one woman out of the sixty-two wards. So that means women, we, let's, let's, imagine if there are five women at the, at the council, ward council level. It makes your pitch much easier, because in my run, I just found it easier. Whether it was a women leader, whether it was a ward executives, most a woman sees you, ah, my daughter, ah, my sister. Whether they're faking it to make it, it didn't matter, you just had a natural ally there. People will say, look, don't trust this one, they'll just chop your money, don't go here, you know. So it, I, I think, let's start from the ward council level and let the conversation, please, I, I just go from the ward level to the local government and then to the State House of Assembly, and then to the House of Rep and, and, and to the Senate and to presidency, we have to do both simultaneously. So, I mean, that's my, and also, and one more thing, as you're doing word up, please, please get a mentor. I can't, I cannot, I cannot understand the power of the political mentors that I had from telling you what to eat, how to, you know, what to say, how to dress, I mean, you just get a mentor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Simi. So you need to be communicating not just from the top to the bottom, but also bottom-up communications. And what I get from what you said is literally just draw a relationship map of everybody that is vital to your campaign from the word level up to the highest level. It helps if you know everybody that is at each step of the way and you know how their relationships, you know, work together in synergy, and then just take it from there and then build the relationships as you go. But you have to identify first of all, who are those people, especially from the bottom to the top level, you know. And then, you know, preferably one of those people pick and hold on to as a mentor, literally someone that can hold your hand up a, as you go. So I'll come to Honorable Adisa now. I mean, it's been very enlightening listening from your perspective as a, as a man, but, you know, also trying to relate that to our own unique experiences as women. So, I mean, based on the experiences you've had, the women you've related with in your position, those that you, you know, you look up to as people who are strong in this political game, how, how do you, what advice would you give to a woman who is planning to make a career in politics, especially from twenty twenty three?
All right, thank you, thank you, Kadija. I think the, the reason why we've been talking about mindset is just for, not because it's impossible, but just so that you prepare yourself. You know, even when we're not talking about elections and we're talking about appointments, we still don't get enough women representation, even when it is, it is not even going through election. There is just a governor or a president to appoint, we still don't get the thirty percent or thirty-five percent. So a woman should understand that this is what is out there, you know, and, and, and then so what? What am I going to do about it? It, it is what it is. And, you know, that sort of rock still conviction that I'm going to go through it, I'm going to roll up my sleeves. I've, I've spoken to a lot of the women, honorable members, there was one from Akiti, and she told me how women really supported her and to get into office. And I've spoken to another one that said women were her biggest issues, they, they frustrated her, you know. So that's two different points of view. So let's, let's, let's understand that no matter what we're going to do, we're going to have challenges. But roll up your sleeves. I, I, I said I started from the community, you know, if your people accept you, they will go the extra mile for you, you know, and, and, and there is no easy way to say it. So it's, yes, we're going to strategize, but they want you to see you, they want you to be like them, they want you to eat with them and, 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 you know. So there, there is this, this work that needs to be done, especially when you want to represent people. I can only speak from my experience, but I know that it made a difference, you know. You, you, you have to really get ready, go to the meetings, go to the, the programs, be part of, of the people you want to represent, you know. And, 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 and I think, you know, if you start now, if you start early, you know, you're going to be involved in the selection process at the party, you're going to be involved in so many things that you become accepted. There is one woman I respect, she ran for House of Rep in my constituency. Every time we do leaders meeting, she's always the only woman there, but she's a strong voice, she's a strong voice. And one of the things I've just realized is this woman, her conviction, you can knock it, she, she refuses to be said, look, I'm a woman, sit aside, never. She will, she will bust her way through anything. And I think it's that level of conviction, it's that level of, of strength of character that, you know, we have to continue to push and continue to get collaborations from people that will support this movement. And I, and I, you know, trust that over time, we will start to see changes right from the party all the way into the elective seats.
Thank you so much, Honorable Adisa.
Sorry, 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 Kadija, just, just, just to, you know, when, since I was reading stats, she said three thousand and thirty-two people contested, sixty-eight people won. Three thousand and thirty-two contested, sixty-eight won. There, you know, and, and for me, that in itself shows that we need, there's some working we need to do in that elective process, in that going for election. Yes, there are issues there, but there are some people surmounting it, let's find out how they are doing it and let's, let's, let's make it happen.
Okay, so what, the major things I pick, I've picked from what you said is, first of all, you have to equip yourself with knowledge, with the requisite knowledge. Then don't, you know, keep throwing the pity party, accept the realities as they are, accept the challenges that you have to deal with and then just own it, be ready to put in the hard work, right, and be smart, learn as quickly as you go. But do not continue to feel sorry for yourself, just accept those challenges, work with it, and then learn from mistakes as, you know, as fast as possible. And finally, we're coming to you, Dr. Magro. I'm very interested in hearing, you know, your advice for women running for office, considering the fact that you, you said yourself, and you've run time and time again, and that resilience has not waned one bit. You continue to, to vie for the office. What, I mean, the immediate thing that comes to my mind, first of all, you know, is that determination. But what, what other things would you say to the woman that is watching you, especially young women? You know, you work a lot with women via the, the foundation. So I'm really interested in hearing your views on how women can, can be more successful in the political field, especially come twenty twenty three.
Okay, first I'll say that any woman that wants to contest election, first, she has to be registered, yeah, she must have a voting card. Secondly, she must identify a party that she wants to run under and understand the party system. Third, she has to develop a very thick skin. Fourth, she has to look for all those men, the he, for she's, that will help support her. And she knows, she has to know the environment she wants to contest. I'll give an example, if you want to run in Abuja, you want to run in Lagos, it's totally different if you want to run in Kebi or you want to run in Sokoto, it's a totally different ballgame. So you have to know the environment that you want to go and contest, get, adapt to that area. Unfortunately, one of the things that we face as women are the issues of where you come from. So you have to really identify where you, you have the most threat. If you're married, is it where your husband is from or where you are from? Or, I mean, where your parents are from or where you've been born and you lived, that's an issue too. It comes into play when it comes to politics and it plays a very major role. So you have to identify where your best chances are for you to contest your elections. Funding, as we said, you have to start working towards funding and work with lots of other organizations that would probably help you. And you have to be, you know, the next, the most important thing, you have to be very, very strong, 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 strong. Because the least person you expect to go against you might go against you. And sometimes that really hurts. So you have to become a very strong woman and be very thick-skinned too.
Heard that, so be strong, thick-skinned, know your environment, it feeds into what Honorable said. Heard that. So be strong, thick-skinned, know your environment. It feeds into what Honorable said, uh, said earlier about equipping yourself with knowledge. And then, of course, again, get male allies. That's the one thing that we keep hearing. So you cannot, you know, belittle the roles that men would still play in, in, uh, the success of your campaign. So we're just going to flow, um, immediately into the interactive session. Um, I'm aware that, uh, Honorable Adisa might be leaving us soon. He has an engagement by six. However, I'm hopeful that, um, he can field some questions, uh, depending on how they come before he leaves. So, um, the, we're starting now, um, the rules, as, um, Ibi Druke said earlier, was you raise your hand if you have a question. I will also be looking through the chat box for people who would rather drop their questions there as text. Um, however, just, um, raise up your hands and then, um, I will be on the lookout and the admin as well. They will unmute you. And then you ask your questions. Please keep it succinct. If you can ask those questions between fifteen to twenty seconds, that would be best. And then, uh, panelists, you could direct it at the panelist that you wish to answer that question. For the purposes of this session, Cynthia Mbamalu, who delivered the presentation earlier, will also be taking questions. So you can direct it at Dr. Magro, Cynthia, Simi, um, Honorable Adisa, as well as Ibrahim. So, uh, yeah, we can go ahead now. If, if you have questions, you know, raise your hand or just drop it here in the, in the box. We'll take three questions at a time and then we'll take, uh, the answers from there. Oh, wow. I saw quite a lot of activity in the chat box, so I'm a bit surprised at the silence. I'm hoping a woman is going to, you know, surprise me. I remember what Simi said earlier about all the women sitting at the back. So someone has to ask a question. Okay, Deborah Unwabudike says she has a question. Um, can admin please unmute her? Deborah Unwabudike.
Hello.
Hi, Deborah. Go ahead, please.
So, um, are all the elections happening in twenty twenty-three? Cause I understand some state and local government elections happen sometimes before, after that time period. And are there things in place for those elections?
So if I got you right, you're asking if there, if there's what in place for the elections coming up before twenty twenty-three, what are you asking is in place?
Like, do we have, um, campaigns and, cause if you go to the Alexa website, you see a lot of, um, campaign strategy and lessons and, you know, just preparing women for the twenty twenty-three elections. But what if the election comes before that? Would they still be able to make it with everything going on?
Okay, thank you. And who are you directing that question to?
Um, it's just open, actually.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll take a second and third question.
Um, should I just speak? Cause my hand was up and they asked.
Yes, please. Please go ahead.
Um, I guess my question would be directed to, um, Miss Magro. Um, as a young person, how do you suggest that we set ourselves up, up for someone that would be able to run and someone that people would support? Because we're doing a lot of different things in school and not really directed at, um, going towards a political position. So how exactly do you set yourself up, um, for success as a candidate in Nigeria?
Okay, we'll take one more question.
So Chuku, Chuku Nemena has his hand, uh, at the top.
Yeah, she's the one who just requested. Um, Lola Femi also, Lola Femi has her hand up.
Hi, good evening. Hello.
Hi, good evening. Please go ahead, Lola.
Yeah, so I've got two questions actually. Um, so I want to know if anyone knows why in two thousand and seven, we had more female participation in politics? And two, uh, Simi gave an example of, uh, women going to sit at the back. How do we correct that social conditioning? Because I think this starts from the grassroots, right? Um, there was this story on Insta blog a few days ago and the girl gave an example of, uh, she said she was angry that her child was being taught in school that women are supposed to be in the kitchen and, you know, the father goes to work and all of that. So all of these are social conditionings that people grow up with. And that automatically places women in the back and stops women from going for leadership positions. I've seen some statistics where women feel that if I'm not qualified enough a hundred percent for the job, I'm not going to apply for it. But when men feel that they have like sixty percent qualification, they go for it. So, and that's one mentality that has kept women at the back in leadership positions and in politics, you know, economic, whatever. So how do we address this problem from the grassroots? Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, this is directed at, uh, Dr. Magodo, please. And, uh, the, the first question is for, the second question is for Dr. Magodo and the first question is for Simi. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, um, we'll start with, um, so there's an open-ended question, right? Um, we'll start with that. Are things on ground for the elections ahead of twenty twenty-three? You know, in terms of structures, uh, campaigns, like, actually, I think this might be directed to someone at, on the elect team. So let's bring it down. Let's, uh, bring that question down. Start with Mrs. Magro. How do we set ourselves up as backable candidates? We're all doing different things, but, you know, how do we package ourselves as candidates that can be backed by the electorate, by the parties?
Okay, I think, um, even the first question, um, if things are in place, if I understand the question before that, um, she probably wanted to know because other, uh, positions have been contested for before twenty twenty-three. And so how can you prepare yourself and how can you get into that? So, and some parties, they do their, um, you still have to register with the party. You have to be, you have to participate, especially in the grassroots. So most of this, um, elections that take place before twenty twenty-three are things like the councillorship, um, elections, um, delegates for parties that, um, actually practice the delegate system. Um, and then you have this like chairmanship. So you have to look at the table of the party that you want to contest under and see how the different times the elections will come in. And then the same process goes with it. You have to be registered with them. You have to know the system that's going on and you know the positions that you want to. Majority of what takes place in twenty, that will take place in twenty twenty-three are elections like, um, the first that comes up usually is a presidential, the senate and the house of rep, followed by the governorship, um, and the state house of assembly. So other elections will probably take place before that time. So you have to know the party system that you, you want, um, the party you want to, you know, um, register with and be a part of. And you understand what the ideology of that party is and you actually agree with it. So you, you, you know, you're contest for those other positions that come in before that, because those other positions have to be in place before the main twenty twenty-three elections. Um, I don't know if I've answered that question that she asked with regards to that. Um, now for the other young lady that, um, she says you have things like school and studying to do. How do you get yourself packaged and ready for, you know, elections? First of all, do you participate in school politics? Are you a member of some union or do you contest? I mean, a lot of things I see most of a tertiary universe, um, institutions is that a lot of our young girls, um, don't contest for positions, a lot of them. We have a lot of them that, you know, um, uh, and most of what happens is if you realize and you notice most of the women or even the men that go into advocacy, civil societies, go into politics are the ones that actually started from tertiary institutions coming up. So if you're even in school, you must participate in activities that goes on for you to understand how the politics works. Um, from there, you have to get yourself a mentor. You have to identify somebody that can mentor you, um, within your environment and where you want to participate in politics. You have to make, you must volunteer. You must volunteer. You can't just come out and just say, oh, I want to become this. If you notice, ladies, the men, what they do, they always trick us in this, okay? The men, what they do is they get the younger men and the, uh, and the young boys to actually work and serve under them in everything that you do. That way they are training those men to actually come out for the political positions. Just like she was working with the governor, whatever. He was learning his ropes. He didn't tell you that. He was learning all those things and he was being mentored. So you must be ready to work under somebody and learn, learn the ropes, be male or female. Okay, in the area that you want to contest that election, you must be able to give up time for it and learn very well. You take a lot, but then you would learn very well. Get yourself a very good mentor. Uh, it doesn't have to be a woman. They could be different people, but you have to know the locations because different areas, different politics and different behaviors. Um, I think, do I have another question or should I?
No, I think that, that answers, that answers the second question. So, um, I'll come to Cynthia now. Um, I also want you to touch, um, to touch on, you know, the question of what we have on ground. Right? To ensure victories for female, um, candidates for elections that come before twenty twenty-three. That's one. And then secondly, someone was interested in, you know, interpreting the data that you, uh, presented earlier about why we had more female candidates in two thousand and seven, I think. You know, and which then faced a decline in the next two election cycles. So, um, Cynthia.
Okay, um, um, thank you. So just to add to, um, the contributions done by Dr. Magro. So we have in elections coming up between now and the next time, general election. And I think for women interested in contesting in the next elections, this would be a good time to also engage your parties at that level. So for instance, there are some by-elections coming up in Cross River, Quaibom, Bayelsa. If you're here from any of the states, just take note, you could start engaging your parties at that level. Cross River, Quaibom, Bayelsa, we have in Platu, Imo, um, Zanfar, Bauti. And these are by-elections that would be holding. Some are state-level elections, it's assembly and some others are federal, that's national, um, senate and house of representatives. I don't know if I'm missing anything. Did I mention Katsina? Yes, Katsina is also another state by-elections. That, my neck has already put the, the, the other is also, we have some off-second governorship elections in Anambra next year to twenty seventeen. And Akiti and Oshun in, sorry, not in twenty twenty-one, Akiti and Oshun twenty twenty-two. Now, it's always good to engage, to start becoming active at the party level. Whatever is going on in your particular state where you intend to run for office. So in case any of your states or any of you fall within the state, you can start engaging at that level. The other is also to look forward to, Simi made an important point about who makes decision within the parties. Um, party conventions to become active at that level also. Because you, if it's, this contesting for election, there's, there are different ways you can contest to run for office in Nigeria. You could also contest to occupy seats within your political parties because we need more women at the leadership positions in parties to inform policies and even promote gender-sensitive procedures in the parties. Yeah, the other question on why gender, why twenty thousand and seven? Now, interestingly, two thousand and seven was one of our worst elections in Nigeria, actually. Um, when the president, after he won the elections, he came and said he went through a flood process. So we also have been challenged interpreting that data because two thousand and seven, we had more women who were in the National Assembly. And since then, it's been a decline. So, um, there, there are several factors to look at that. But I think there's, there was a lot around party support, um, parties, um, um, parties in, um, within some geopolitical zones, supporting women candidates. There's a lot of conversational around that. That could be a contributing factor. There was also the, um, the conversation around, we were just, our democracy was testing a lot of things. We had done nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three. So it was, it's more like a mid, because we put oh-seven is a bit like a mid between, um, eleven fifteen, oh-seven, um, oh, nineteen ninety-nine, oh-three. So there's a lot of conversational. I can't explain why, but there are several factors that could have helped, um, or it did women emergence in two thousand and seven. However, um, that has not been the case subsequently because it's been a, a further decline. So we need to understand what happened in oh-seven and then plan for that towards, um, twenty twenty-three. But I, I, I hope, um, we can have better women representation actually, because oh-seven was still really poor. Just like it was better than, um, twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen elections.
Thank you so much, Cynthia. And, um, I'll throw this question, next question to Simi. Sorry, I'm partial, guys. I, I decided to start with, uh, with the women, but the very next question, we'll have Honorable Adisa and Ibrahim take them. So, um, Simi, how to correct social conditioning? Right? Our girls are being taught unhealthy, we'll do say unhealthy, for lack of a better word. They're being taught questionable, you know, things at school. They're picking up, um, unhealthy practices and they are within their social circles. The women themselves are stepping up. How do we correct that social conditioning from the grassroots?
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, I think Lola Femi asked that question. Um, there's, there's really no silver bullet. There's no one straight, um, answer. It, it, it will take a village, but it's a disconnect because working in public primary schools, um, for, for, oh, before, over eight years, I, I don't see a problem with female leadership in the classroom. So clearly it's somewhere between, uh, maybe university and the real world that something happens. But in a primary school, I mean, I, I, this is a public, a public primary school, it's on grassroots. The best students are usually female, but the, the head girl is always, almost always hundred percent performs even the. For, so, um, I'm here for all the activities that we put on ground. The, I mean, they're so engaging. I, so I don't know what happens to the girl child between, I can't explain it. But I know that the classroom is where you can see the rawness of, you know, of innocent childhood and girls are not afraid. So what happens somewhere along the line, the system, both in, both formal and informal education, probably beats it out of, uh, 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 women, where we are now asking ourselves, where, where are the women? Like, it, it doesn't make sense because like I said, in primary school, I don't, I don't see that happening. Um, but how do we change it? I, I know that I, 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 I never underestimate the power of intention. So for people, Lola Femi, again, when you go into a room and you see there not enough women, you know, what can you do the next meeting to bring in more women? I, 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 you know, we, again, it's, it's, I, I, I've been in situations where we, we have to make sure we're in the room. There were presidential meetings and they wanted the president to acknowledge certain people from, uh, there were a thousand people in the room. Then one of those presidents will give certificates to six people, geop- uh, uh, symbolically from six geopolitical zones. I saw the list going and the list had all men. Then I asked, why, why is it all men? Isn't it? That, that's what, I didn't know, no, 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 no. I took the list, but I said, no, the, 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 the security said, no, they can't change. The list, the president already has the list. I said, sorry, I want to change it. And I took the paper and I cancelled three men from it and added three women. So again, I don't know how to answer the question generically, but I know that each and every one of us, if we are just intentional, I, I shouldn't be the only one. You know, where, where are the other women? And you go and rally two or three from your community and bring them back into the room. I think we'll start having, making progress. So I'm sorry, it's from an individual level. I can't talk, I can't really talk from a systemic level because it's myriad, is a, is a myriad of variables. Thank you.
All right, um, Bolu Olodjo has her hands up. Admin, if you could please, uh, unmute her. Bolu Olodjo or Olodjo. I'm sorry if I murdered your name. Please. We also have Bumi Doctor, Dr. Bumi with her hands up. Is that me in there?
Hello.
Okay.
How, how, hello, admin. This is Bolu Olodjo. Yeah, so I wanted to ask a question, but someone already asked the exact same question and it's already been answered. So I'm good.
Oh, okay, that's fine. It was nice to hear your voice, all the same. So, uh, we have, uh, Bumi, Dr. Bumi, you can go ahead, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, my question is similar to the first question asked by the lady. I wanted to know, I mean, for a lot of people, probably before now, the participation had been new in terms of registering with political parties and all whatnot. So is it too late, one? Like for me, if I wanted to do anything, I'm not interested in going to Abuja or Lagos state. I feel my impact is within the local government in which I grew up. I've had a lot of giving back to that community, but before now, politics was not on the cards. So what I've had is for every project I'd done, I've had the party, local government chairman coming to help me commission or do things like that. So if I wanted to go into politics now to make my impact even felt better, how do I go? I mean, knowing that the existing parties might not, um, be so welcoming, one. Or a lot of them, like if you went to. Or a lot of them, like if you went to August State right now, there's a lot of posters about people wanting to go into local government and um all the other positions at the grassroots level. So are there alternatives or what would you suggest in that instance? Thank you.
Kadija, you're muted. Oh, geez. Um Oma Wumi Elebuthe has her hands up. Latifat Amadubalogun has her hand up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, I think I'm going to give credit to Mrs. Magoro. Actually, she nailed it and then I really like what she said about if you want to participate in anything, you should just start from the grassroots, from your children's school, participate, participate. So my question goes to uh the organizer of this uh electa. So what kind of support do your organization offer? Because we know that the most party that you can either join is either PDP or APC. And there's sometimes they have their own grand road policy and all that. It might actually affect your own value system, right? Your mission based on the fact that, okay, this is how we do our thing, irrespective of you getting him. You might not actually move forward because this is what we have our own template. And then um and I I could see it could be one of the reasons why while uh female in the leadership is actually declining in in public office. So uh my question is, what is this uh electa organization doing? Support system, what are they doing to support women uh to get into such offices?
Thank you. And um so Latifat, Latifat Amadubalogun has her hand up.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's it's really been insightful. So I have more comments and questions altogether, some of which have been attended to already, like the one for Simi. Talking about the firm girls engagement from stats. She said it's not systematic, like she put it, but I think it is. For instance, when I go to my daughter's um social studies homework, they make it seem like girls should be in the kitchen. I get really, really like thrown out when I see homeworks in that nature, saying women, like the men are the leader at home. And mommy should be in the kitchen and all. So I think from stats, they already build an impression, a perception that this is your limit, this is where you belong. And I don't know if you get what I'm trying to say. So there's already like a direction, like kind of manipulative emotionally, like this is where you belong. This is what you should aim for. So when my daughter even puts it to me, like mommy, mommies are in the kitchen, I'm like, no, mommies do work. Mommies do have careers, mommy do build, I don't, mommy are leaders as well. So I think it should start from the schools as well, not just the grassroots. It's a system thing. It's a notion that's been built for years. And even
Thank you so much.
From generations. Then the second thing I wanted to talk about, um
I'm sorry, let let if I if I could just, if I could just comment, what do you have? Is it a comment or a question? We need to round.
Yeah, that I, okay, sorry, that was a comment, like I said. So for my next question, sorry about that. So my next question.
In in fifteen seconds.
In fifty seconds, yes, directed to Dr. Magoro. So she has said so much regarding women and politics. And when she said, um, okay, so we've been talking about twenty twenty three. And with everything that's been stated required for you to go into politics, I feel twenty twenty three might be a short timeline. I don't know if she can throw more light into the timeline. How early do one start to pursue a political career? Because there's so much to do, and I feel from now to twenty twenty three, it might not even be enough time. And that's my question for Dr. Magoro.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if any man in the house has a question. I mean, we've been talking uh for a large part of the conversation has been about male allies and how men should support their women, you know. Is there a man that has a question in the house? I can see Yes, please. Thank you so much, Olusha Go Alimi.
Not, not, not a project, yeah, because it's a question. I mean, I'm just throwing it out to all the women. And we know we say he for she, like I am and things like that. But in terms of planning how women can really, you know, go into political office, there should also be a clear map or a pathway for men to come in. You know, different pathways that men can come in. So from support system to fundraising, how can men key? You know, so men who want to support. So first of all, there should be a strategy for recruitment of men. Secondly, when these men are recruited, what path can we play? You know, so those clear pathways for men to plug in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So um we'll move straight into the answers and we'll start with Honorable Adisa. Um I really want you to answer this question, you know, she said, is it too late? Is it ever too late to take part in politics? And I'm going to collapse it into one of the questions that was asked also about how early do you have to start, you know, to go into politics? So is it ever too late and how early do you have to start? You know, twenty twenty is just around the corner. Honorable Adisa.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um before I answer that question, I just want to touch on something that was said earlier and and um I know it's sort of been answered. Well, I presume people are asking, why are we having different election years? Because you know twenty twenty three is general election, but we might not be aware, but some states have court cases. So their own election dates go out of sync, like Ekiti, like Oshun, so it goes out of sync. So that's why they don't do elections during the general elections and they count their own four years starting from when the governor entered. So I just thought I should, I should chip. Um and then the local governments are decided by the um local government, usually it's by the state, the state decides um that and that's that's why it's different all over, all over. Now, um Dr. Magoro mentioned something about mentoring, um about me having a mentor. Without a doubt, my late boss, Senza Abialajimobi, um helped me immensely in politics. Um he was the first governor to do two terms. I learned how to win elections with him. I was part of his, his, his ground team. We, 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 you know, I saw how, you know, the workings of winning election for for a state that has never had the governor do two terms. You know, he was the first and we were part of it and it really helped me when I got to twenty nineteen. And so what I want to say in that regard is, please, when we are planning, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. You know, when you talk about these things, it twenty twenty three is good. But like Ibrahim also said, you must have, you know, midterm, long-term plan. It's not going to happen overnight. Unless we get frustrated and drop the ball altogether. But we must be intentional, we must plan, we must, you know, start to move strategically over a period of time. So it's never too late. Please, as you said, the only way there are no independent candidatures, please join the party. Now, my, every time I talk about parties, people say, oh, those parties are dirty, we don't want to get into them. Unfortunately, those parties are the ones that have structure. And like yeast or like Ribena, if you, if you have a bottle that has a lot of Ribena in it and you start pouring water in it, over time, the Ribena changes color to pure, to like pure water. So we need to get more people, right people into those parties. The the parties already have the structure. If you're going to start building a party, it's not impossible, but it's very difficult. But if you continue to get the right people, you and your friends all going to the party, going to the same ward, start challenging, start asking questions. And leadership is not tied to, leadership is influence. So if you don't need a title to start to to bring influence in a ward, they don't need to call you woman leader or youth leader before you start to make changes. If you go there and you start to say, look, we are going to clean the community and we're going to do this and we're going to do health missions or education programs. All of a sudden, you start seeing people follow you. And then when they come to Congress or conventions, then they will say, ah, sister, do you want to become the the ward chairman or do you want to become something in the party? So we need to get involved early. As I said earlier, on the grassroots is really where the work is. That is the path we have abandoned. But what we see is the fruits, the fruits are the seeds, but the roots of the tree, that's where the grassroots is and that's where enough work hasn't been done. So please, it's not too late, let's get involved. If twenty twenty three will not work, we have learnt something. Um the um lady that spoke, she she said she she's been doing a lot of things. That's social capital. Those things will come into play when you decide to run for politics, because they've known you as somebody that wants to add a value to other people and people will see that as a plus when you decide to run for office. So I just want to add add those things. And parties, they say they're all the same, but please look for parties that share values with you, that have the same, you know, things you're looking for and 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 join and make 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 a difference. Add your own path. That's that's what I feel. So it's not too late.
Thank you. Well, uh Ibrahim, thank you so much for the patience. Now, I think I would like you to weigh in on this question about what are the clear pathways for how men can play roles in the camp- uh in the campaigns of female candidates, right? So we've recruited these men, but what can they do? Wha- what are the different roles that they can play, you know, to aid women get into office?
Okay, sorry. Um my take on this one is that women, I think um the language we are showing, the 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 booty language of showing that somebody has to pity you to to make you what you want to be. Even women that are married in their houses, you understand, they stand to what they want. The husband
Let me quick, let, sorry, I'm so sorry to cut him. For context, that question was asked by a man who is, you know, interested in learning how he can he can come in. I forgot to mention that earlier.
Okay, what I'm just trying to do, I'm just, I'm just making a background for it so that at least the women would know that they have the powers. They have, the first thing is that you have to so, this is what I can offer. We we can just, men cannot just come and say, okay, we are going to remove the men and now bring the women, even if we know they cannot do it because we just want to keep their space and we want to just stand ourselves as we are doing the uh the thirty-five percent, whatever. The women supposed to come forward. They have to show them, so, look at Simi, she has done it. A lot of women can do, but they are sharing with, for example, in the North Up Not here, women and the Malams have already had like like a head on. The Malams, I said, women are not supposed to go into position, they are not supposed to be, Dr. Magoro will actually um uh validate what I'm saying. But in the Mox, in the church, in the Mox, it's always going in the northwest, for example. But we have to break the news. Women suppose, he has wives, you understand, that Malala is talking. We have to go through those women that we have seen to start talking to those men to understand that they're supposed to come and be the uh he for, she for, for her, for example. So if you are trying to do that one, then the women too, supposed to see that we are not in competition with them. For example, I'm here, I'm advocating. The only thing I see is that you can't build a nation without women. That's my belief. Everybody knows about that. It's not possible for you to build any nation without women. Even in the history of Islam, if you go and listen carefully, you will see the role, women, please, at early stage of the even the religion. So it's not something that you can take, we're supposed to take this social analysis often. But what we intend, we want women to do is that give us a clear, don't see us as a, as a, as competitors, see us as partners, you understand? Show to us what we know you can do. For example, a lot of people tell me that women belongs to kitchen. If you said women belongs to kitchen, isn't not something that of talent that work in the kitchen? If somebody can cook, why don't we go and cook? The soup that you see a woman cook, it's a talent, it's knowledge. As a man, I can do it. So that is start of different type of knowledge. We have to understand that even changing diapers is a knowledge. These women are sophisticated, they know exactly what they want to do. Us as men is just for the women to carry us along. I said, okay, we know we can partner with us. Let's see the strength that we have, push us so that we can do. We are not supposed to, you know. As Simi said, you can tap somebody and said, excuse, I want to sit on this seat. He will be surprised, a woman, maybe he will not even talk to you, he will just jump up because he don't, this confidence that you are put to tell him, excuse me, sir, this is my seat. We have to get that confidence.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
This is what we are trying to put, let the mindset
Thank you so much, Ibrahim. Like, the passion is just radiating, but, you know, time is far-fetched and if there, if there's nothing, I mean, if you pick one thing from all of these women, you know, the mindset, what we're saying is the mindset of, you know, excuse me, please, this is my seat. In everything that you're doing, how you comport yourself, it's that mindset of, excuse me, this is my seat. So you give yourself, allow yourself to believe that that seat belongs to you in the first place. And uh Honorable Adisa, please say hi to our little uh female leader there in the background. It's, you know, it's really uh heartwarming to see that little interaction a while back. So we'll move um straight to the last question, which flows into um the rest of the program. And that's for someone on the elect her team to specifically address what um support elect her offers to female aspirants that wish to run for office. How do you support these aspirants? So um I'll hand that over to the elect her team and then, you know, go with the rest of the program. Thank you so much for being a part of this. I'm so wild. We still have, you know, more than eighty percent of the people we started with. So thank you for being here and don't forget, today is the best day to be young, to be Nigerian and to be a woman. So please uh keep the torch burning. I'm over to you, Ubi Joké or um Apa Sedi.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Kadija. Thank you so much for that. And thank you to everyone who has stuck around. Um it has been very informative, but just based on that last question, give us ten more minutes of your time and we'll run you through what elect has approach is, what it has to offer for uh everyone who has asked. Um and then kind of share with you some of the things that you can take away today and let everyone know that you were here with us. Um, great. So, Ibi Joké, I'll hand over to you to to kick this off.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone. Um it's been such an insightful discussion. And uh thank you to that person that asked the question directly, what is elect doing? How can we help women? Um of course, you know that electa is uh an end-to-end organization that is looking to support women to run for office and win elections. So very shortly, we're going to be showing you just our critical steps. We're not going to be having the long conversation, we're not going to give so much context because um Cynthia has done an amazing job at setting the context. Our panelists have done an amazing job in really dissecting the different barriers and just talking about the critical steps we can take towards twenty twenty three. So if you ask me, why elect her? It's very simple. Imagine a Nigeria where men and women can contribute equally to policy formulation and lawmaking. Imagine the multiply effect on 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 border allocation. Imagine the 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 effect on 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 health and education, which really defines the health of any nation. So at electa, this is not about, it's it's not a man versus woman conversation, it's more of uh a conversation of greater representation for the benefit of the economy.
Thank you very much, Ibi Joké. So um what you can see on your screen is our theory of change. I think as everyone alluded to, particularly Dr. Magoro, there are women who went ahead of us and we acknowledge the work that has been done. There are women who sat at the Beijing Conference in nineteen ninety five and twenty-five years on. What they had wished for is not what exactly exactly is happening as we've seen in the data. So in uh when we were thinking about elect, it was very important to come up with an end-to-end approach. And what does that look like? It's a four E approach that looks around, how can we engage women? And we'll talk a bit more about this shortly. How can we encourage them to decide? Um Kadija rounded up that session with, women, you have permission, so take it, right? How can we equip them to run and how can we enable them to win? And most importantly, as we have said, why are we saying all of this? Because the research shows that women have a more redistributive agenda. And so we have more women in elective office, we will have a more inclusive society that is good for not just women, but women, men, boys, girls, persons living with disabilities. So looking at our first two Es, the first one is to engage women. And we've talked a lot about patriarchy, about misogyny, right? About stereotypes. And so the first E is all around engagement. And who do we want to engage? We want to engage everyone. So women themselves, but also all the critical stakeholders that play a role in either preventing women or reinforcing those stereotypes, right? And then also, so this includes the political parties, you know, our families, everybody, whether we like it or not, because it is systemic. Patriarchy is systemic. And so it has to also be deliberate to use behavior change to also change that. And some of the ideas that we have are around new media, impact storytelling, to ensure that we're engaging, not just to engage, but engaging to change behavior. And then the second E is around encouraging women to decide. And I think that there has been a lot of conversation that makes us realize, and we knew this, that, look, women don't even raise their hands. When it comes to women in entrepreneurship, women in business, the numbers are not great, but we have seen But we have seen women who have broken that glass ceiling. However, when it comes to political leadership, it's not the same. And so how do we deliberately encourage women? And so Electa has launched the first national recruitment platform, I think it was Simi that mentioned that. The, the need to recruit women, right? Because if we start to advocate for a quota and today they give us that quota, then where are the women? And so Decide to Run is a platform that if you are interested in elective office today, you can go on our website. Um, I can see that someone has already put it in the chat for us, thank you. And actually click on that, or if you don't want to run yourself, but you know a woman who is capable, competent, who is ready, then refer her. Send it to her and let her be the woman that actually raises her hand to run. And, um, I mean, I should also mention, because we talked about network and we'll talk about it shortly, that it's not just about joining Decide to Run. There's a whole value chain of offerings that happens after you join. Over to you, Ibi Joké.
Thank you so much, Abosedi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So I'm just going to rush through these. Um, I was today, I was talking about the site to run. And essentially, Decide to Run is a platform, um, it's, you know, has a virtual, um, as a virtual community. Someone talked about the power of community, involving different women of different backgrounds, religion, um, political parties together, but for one common purpose, which is to enable women to run and win peer-to-peer exchange. So there's going to be the virtual platform, though we have, uh, access to uh, fundraising through the platform, so many opportunities, but essentially is that we're getting those women together. Now, to run to these other paths that is equipped. Now, um, one of the things that a lot of organizations are doing in the space is equipped, which is good. And so we believe that, um, for Electa, we need to really set ourselves apart. And the kind of infrastructure, the ways it's delivered, that is called Electa Academy. And Electa Academy is in three different streams. So we're going to have the online learning platform. Now, the online learning platform is going to be self-paced learning, where you can learn about political participation, different things, just like you're taking an online course, right? And then we have the virtual training. Now, the virtual training will be in-person or, um, facilitated and learning online as well. So experts in the field, the Simis, the Cynthia's can come and teach you critical things that you need to develop and um, the skills you need to acquire to run for office. Now, the final one, which, I mean, we are all very excited about, is something that is very novel to the space and it's called Electa Future Lawmakers Program. Now, we're very deliberate about this because we need to start raising the next generation of future lawmakers for Nigeria. One, if you look at the Child Rights Act, we have eleven states in Northern Nigeria that yet to domesticate that policy. And when it comes to policymaking Nigeria, it's a game of numbers. When you have the male, um, the male, um, the male lawmakers outnumber the female lawmakers, it means that even at a point of policy formulation, um, we've already been, um, pulled apart. So we need to start opening the number of women that are playing in politics, so that they have the right skills, they understand, they understand policy formulation and they can drive the right agenda. So what we're trying to do for Electa Future Lawmakers Program is to incubate twenty-five fellows and we're going to be opening the application in, in December. The idea is to incubate there for six months, give them the right, um, give them the right, um, footing to get into, into, um, their constituencies, to work on community projects, to learn the ropes of our lawmaking works, to interact with the National Assembly and to start planning their campaign strategically ahead of twenty twenty three. So we are very, we're very, um, much, um, intentional about that. And the last one, um, on this bit is enable them to win. Now, one thing that's been done over the years is, you know, equipping women, engaging people, but the enabling part is something that's been missing for so long. And so we're taking a bold move as Electa to say, look, there's certain things that affect women. One of the things is campaign financing. We cannot say women should get into politics competitively without growing the, 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 um, financial capital. So the whole idea of enabling women to win, win has to do with growing the social capital, the human capital and your financial capital. And how we're going to do this is one, the election campaign fund, which is the endowment fund. And that will have, um, that will feature, one of the, one, one part of it will feature structured funding. And the second part will feature fund, crowdfunding, which Ibrahim has spoken a lot about. The structured fundraising will essentially fund women that are running for House of Representatives upwards. Why the crowdfunding platform is focused for women who are running at that councilorship on position to stay out of assembly, just to ensure that we have the right funding infrastructure that will back in this woman. I will be, we'll be announcing this, so, you know, um, follow our website, follow our social media platform to know, we're rolling out these opportunities. Also, we're building our volunteer network to ensure that women have the right human capital that will back their campaigns. We have so many people that are doing so much and that can offer so much right now. So is it for digital marketing, is it for communication, is it for fundraising or strategy? We want to, we are developing an, um, Electa Volunteers Network where women can actually tap into this pool of volunteers. And the final one would be the dedicated, um, dedicated campaign advisor. So how we intend to do this, each woman that Electa is funding, we have a dedicated campaign advisor. We want to run politics, uh, we want to change the face of politics, we want to run politics like politics should run in Nigeria. With right ideology, with the right structure, with right infrastructure, with right organizing and with the right motivation for women to run. And so those are some of the things that we're going to be offering.
Awesome. So Deborah was just asking in the chat, um, I'm nineteen, how do I get involved? So Deborah, this is for you. Um, we've talked today about a few things, so don't get it confused, right? But we, there is a value chain and then there's a whole spectrum. There are people who just want to get together, as we already said, and Dr. Magoro said, right after, there's actually the data shows that when women run and lose, oftentimes just because of the experience they go through. It's either they're depressed, it's either, you know, they just want to leave the country. So community is a critical part of this. I think, um, I think it was Simi or someone who called it the ecosystem that is really critical to help you. So we're really excited, um, to launch Electa Network today. So this will be a community of women who are interested in seeing an increase in women's political representation in Nigeria. You can play different roles, you don't have to be the candidate, you can be the sponsor, you can be the volunteer, you can be the supporter, as we have heard. So the Electa Network is for everyone, not just, you know, the person who's running, but for everybody. So Deborah, that's where you fit in. However, Decide to Run is if you are ready to run and you want to raise your hand. And so that's the first part of that journey and it kind of feeds into our training and, and all of that. I'll let Ibi Joké talk about the final thing that we have today. You're muted, Ibi Joké.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. So, um, we're just going to play a video and, I mean, we're, we're wrapping up now. And one of the, we really wanted to take some critical actions and one of them is how do we really get people, how do we build the momentum? You know how powerful the NSAS campaign was when you just open your social media and it's NSAS, youths were very, there was a set, I mean, to use this word very lightly, we were all work, right? And it's this workness that's brought us right now. So what I want to do right now is to launch something called I Play to Electa Challenge. And we want to encourage everyone to take part in this challenge. The reason why this is important is the power of social media as a tool of expression, organizing and mobilizing is very important. So please spread the campaign, spread the love, participate, tag people, tag your friends, let them join our Play to Electa.
Hi, everyone. Ibi Joké and Abosedi here. So a lot has been happening over the past few weeks and it has left a lot of us with so much rage and frustration. Yeah, we're so very much truly inspired. We both a few changes for this process. This is why we're excited to introduce the I Pledge to Electa Challenge. So what is the I Pledge to Electa Challenge? Very simple. I pledge to Electa Challenge, the challenge and the freedom for women's political leadership in Nigeria ahead of twenty twenty three. How do you join in? To join the Electa Challenge, visit our website on elect hyphen her dot com forward slash I pledge to Electa. And don't forget, hashtag I pledge to Electa.
Well, thank you very much and, oh, thank you to technology for trying to mess that up, but you're not going to steal my shine. Okay, can you guys still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So, um, please, guys, just join, um, hashtag I play to Electa. Um, use the link that we just shared with you. We're also going to be posting the video and putting, um, the link on our social media platform. But one of our team members has also shared the link as well. So please take part in the challenge. It's okay to be cheesy, but politics has to be very relatable. So put your pictures, do, you know, show your swag, just do anything. But essentially, let's communicate the right message and end it with I play to Electa Challenge. Let's get it viral, let's get people talking, let's make it fun. And I can assure you that when people jump on this bandwidth and subconsciously, we start building our social consciousness. So we look forward to you guys actually partaking in this.
Okay. So with that, um, again, we would like to thank our panelists. We would like to thank Kadija, uh, for being an amazing host. And we would like to thank everyone that thought this was an important conversation to have. Um, Cynthia, thank you so much for that presentation that really set the tone for us to have this conversation. Um, we will be in touch, this is just the beginning, many town halls to come, but most importantly, pledge to Electa. Because as we have seen, it would take all of us to ensure that we get her elected. So thank you once again from me, Abosedi Jodogan. It's been such a pleasure having you. Ibi Joké.
Well, thank you very much, Abosedi. I said it all. Thank you to our speakers, thank you to Cynthia, to Kadija, to every single person, Simi, Ibrahim, Honorable Adisa, um, Dr. Magoro and every single person that has joined us from the beginning to the end. It's been such a useful insight for conversation. And I think why this is interesting is the fact that we're not ranting as usual, we're not coming here to talk about a million problems. We're coming here to talk about practical steps and solutions. And I really hope all the men and women that joined us today sort of understand a clear pathway, where do I fit in, what can I do? And also, women that are looking to join is what my, my kitchen cabinet going to look like going towards twenty twenty three? Do I start putting together my concept note now, getting my campaign strategies now, getting my friends to fundraise? Do I start building my human capital, my social capital, my financial capital? But whatever the case is, just know that you are not alone. And as a network, Electa has got you. We have different products for you if you're looking to support a woman or if you're looking to actually run for office. So do not forget to follow us on social media. Um, it's Electa underscore NG on social media, on, on Instagram and Twitter. And you can check our website, um, W W E dot elect hyphen hard at org, um, to also follow our work as well. And we look forward to really engaging each and every one of you. So thank you so very much again to the panelists for being extremely patient. And to the audience, we have over eighty percent of people that join from the beginning to the end. That's really truly amazing. Let's keep the conversation going. Tweet about your experiences, your learning, your, your learning journey. And also, um, don't forget to, um, tag us and mention us at Electa, um, underscore NG.
Well done.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Have a lovely evening and a beautiful week, everyone.
Bye.
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 Bye, bye, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
Ibrahim, I'm waiting for.
Good job.
Thank you, saints. Nago de eshe.
Nago de eshe gong.